Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, June 14th, 2018. If we could please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got the giggles tonight, everybody? We will start the meeting off with our consent agenda. I will make a motion to approve regular session minutes of May 24th, 2018, executive session minutes of May 24th, 2018, negotiations executive session minutes of May 30th, 2018, Baker-Adams Scholarship Executive Session Minutes of May 30th, 2018, as well as acceptance of warrants 50 P 18 and 49 V 18.
So moved.
Second?
Do you have any discussion on that? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. We do not have our student rep here this evening. I'm sure she's busy studying for her finals. I wanted to ask her how she liked having, you know, seniors and the ability for the juniors to park in the lot.
Oh yeah, I'm sure they like that.
I know I have a junior that's very excited that she can park closer. So that's good.
Does she have her application in for next year?
She does.
Oh, good. Great.
I filled that out.
He used to be in by Monday.
Monday, Monday the 18th, yes. $75 charge. So hopefully all the kids will be happy, no one will be turned away.
Right.
There you go. I hope so.
Hey, mine too.
It's a smaller class.
It is a smaller class.
It should be fine.
Yeah. Definitely should be fine. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda tonight? Okay, we're gonna start off having Mike Anderson come on up, talk about some summer projects that he has ready for him. I was surprised at the length of it.
It's a significant size.
It's like, wow. Keep adding?
No. See, I think there's a couple things I forgot to put on.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the biggest thing we're gonna tackle, obviously, is the security upgrades to the building. And we laid out a timeline of how we're gonna do that. We've already been receiving orders and supplies. A lot of the stuff has been coming in the last few days. So as soon as school gets out, we're gonna like hit the ground running and start getting stuff done. And Steve, our electrician, and Jared have already started running wires and doing things they could to kind of stay ahead of the schedule. So my hope is that we'll finish ahead of schedule. But, I mean, I'm not making that as a promise, but...
Yeah, we're working with a group of the fire chiefs, fire chief, police chief.
Building inspector.
The building inspector, Mike and I, because the night, because the night lock is becoming a bit of a challenge. So it's basically building codes and fire codes would not allow it. Anything that you bolt, anything that you, you know, you have to mechanically, you know, move is, you know, that's permanent, is a problem. So I actually, we left the meeting, we all went to our very, put an email out to all of our professional organizations. Mike got some responses, I got some superintendent responses, Donnie forwarded some things he got, and I'm not sure if Fred had anything. But we're meeting again next week to go over all of that. And what I'm finding from the people I'm talking to is there are a couple of them that did it anyway. And then there's one, there's one in Ashland, remember Ashland gym in Ashland? He told me they had put them all in and then the fire department made to take them all out. Which is why we don't want to go there. Which is why, that's right. So we're, so we're looking at, well, what are the other alternatives? And the two that I've heard is one superintendent, they changed out all the locks so that there was, the teacher had a key inside and somehow that, that was acceptable to the fire department. And most put those magnetic strips, you know, on the, on the door. We, you know, we've been talking about, you know, if you get the sleeves, the sleeve is the same problem in some ways as the bolt. You know, once you get it on, you can't get out. So, so we're, we're looking at those two alternatives, but we're hoping that we can, we have, we'll have plenty of money because obviously the town appropriated money for the night locks. But, you know, we're gonna try to make the best decision for the town. It's obviously the police and, the fire chief and the building inspector are not signing off on anything. I asked to actually talk to the guy at the state. I said, can I just talk to the state? I'm just curious as to whether there's a waiver process. Because the only time we would ever use it would be if there was a, an intruder in the school that was gonna do harm to people. We would not use those things regularly.
You wouldn't use it until after it was announced on the loudspeaker, there's a active, there's a shooter somewhere.
Exactly. So, but they're, they're just nervous, you know, I get it. You know, they, that's the way it's supposed to work. But what would stop anybody from putting it in and then, you know, having, you know, having something bad happen in the room? So we're gonna do what's right, but I just want to keep you informed on that, that we are continuing to meet. We are gonna come up with some kind of an alternative that, you know, will enhance the safety once the students and staff are in the classrooms.
Were there not a few teachers at Pembroke that actually got them as gifts?
The sleeves. The sleeves, they did. They did. They got the sleeves. But there, there are many classrooms. Margaret, did everybody get the magnet?
Everyone has a magnet.
Everyone has the magnets already at, so, so what happens is the door is locked. You put the magnet in so people can come in and out, but then if somebody said it's a lockdown, you just grab the magnet and, you know, the door's locked. You know, nobody has to go out in the hall with their key and try to, you know, lock their door. So, you know, that might be, you know, an alternative that would be less expensive clearly, but...
So are the sleeves?
Well, that's what we're still talking about. We're not talking about, we're not sure. It's anything that really, that's not automatic. Like if we had pushbars on each of the doors so you could just automatically push it and get out, there'd be no problem. But that's probably prohibitively expensive. So we're looking for, you know, what's a, my, what I liked about the night guard, or night lock, whatever it was called, is that it was not only, it wasn't like a, the door is just locked. It was also, in place of having to pile furniture in front of it, because it basically, you know, it would withstand, you know, a lot of, a lot of weight. So that was what was appealing to me when we looked at them, is they gave additional security to the door, not just the door locked, right? Because teachers are supposed to have all their doors locked right now. So, you know, we're just gonna have to keep working on it. We'll keep you informed. But I just wanted you to know that is still an ongoing discussion.
So, I don't, I'm not sure if you have any specific questions about what we're gonna be doing. A lot of it's routine groundwork, mulching, painting the parking lots, fertilizing and seeding the fields. We're gonna clean up some of the islands at Pembroke. They're, you know, getting overgrown and whatever. And we're gonna put some landscape fabric down and mulch them. We want to install a flagpole by the ball field there at Pembroke because they don't have one where our garage is. We're talking about, over near Pearlie, we want to remove the smaller hedge of, hedges because the crossing guard is complaining he can't see all the time right there, so. And then we're gonna work with the highway department on fixing the water in the Pearlie parking lot. I don't know if you ever noticed it, but...
It got worse.
Yeah, it's getting worse and worse.
Is the, they're probably removing the playground equipment. Is that, did we...
You surplused it. We took most of it away, but there's still a couple of pieces back. We kind of ran out, we ran out of time in the fall.
Okay, oh yeah.
Yeah.
Did Park and Rec wind up?
They won it, yeah. We have it over where the dog park is or wherever that is. Yeah, that's where we delivered it to. Yeah, and there's been talk about what we put there, like there's been some ideas about a basketball net or, or, you know, Colleen's talked about putting a picnic table out there or something so her, the seniors could have picnic lunches out there and stuff like that, so. Nothing set in stone, but we just...
The seniors aren't using the playground?
No. So then, we're gonna, you know, at the high school, we're, we're gonna box in all the bleachers and put fabric under those too and put crushed stone because we're always spraying for weeds and trying to cut it up.
Bleachers? What?
You know, you feel like you're sitting on the bleachers, they tickle in your legs, you know?
What bleachers are we talking about? The ones?
Like at the Pearlie Field or over, we already did it at the one set over at the football field, about the scoreboard. We'll replace broken guard rails and paint them. We're gonna clean up that hill. And we usually trim all the rose bushes down in the spring and then they grow back.
You're gonna trim them, you're not, when you say cut down?
Yeah, we cut them pretty low though. They grow right back. They're very wild, yeah.
A haircut.
They got a haircut, but they didn't come back.
Yeah. And then, obviously, I gave you the project timeline for the security plan. And then we'll do all our routine things, paint the interior of the classrooms, hallways, whatever needs it, filters and unit vents and air handlers and check all the exhaust fans on all the roofs and stuff like that. And then we have a big list of IT stuff that Ben's working on. He's gonna be reformatting labs. We've been collecting teachers' computers and updating them. And, you know, a bunch of other things that we're gonna do. So, as you know, we switched to Google and we're slowly shutting down the servers for, so everybody's stirring their information also on Google. And that's been pretty successful.
How many extra people do you have this summer? Summer help?
We, well, we, we cut their hours down lower so that we could add more people, so let me just count four, five, six. It's about eight people, yeah.
Oh wow. And what, do they work in like less than eight hour days?
Yeah, well, 20 hours. Some are doing 20 hours a week and some are doing a little bit more, but...
That's good.
We do have a few, a couple things, like we, we're changing, the nurses are being changed. So Mary Beth Doherty is going to Pembroke, Kathy Hatch is going back between Pembroke and Pearlie. And then Louise is going to the middle high school. So there might be a little bit of moving. Mike's guys will have to help them.
We're gonna move the library from...
Whatever is their stuff. We're talking about moving the library from Pearlie down. Down to the space, you know, in the preschool area. So those are a couple things.
So tell me where that space is. I was trying, the one for the library?
Well, it'll be one or the other. It'll, we, we're gonna have an open classroom now because we're reducing a teacher, remember?
Yeah.
And then the other option is in the room that is the extended day room because pretty much during the day unless extend, is it, early intervention uses it a day a week or something, that room pretty much sits idle. So we could figure out a way to put the library there so the extended day kids could use the library as well as it would be available and open during the day because there'd be nobody using it for classes to come to the library. That's our initial thinking on that.
Yeah, we may make one of those classrooms tile upstairs, right?
Yeah, well, yeah. If we decide to use the upstairs to maybe pursue, you know, a youth center, what do we call rec center, teen center, we would plan to take one of the rooms upstairs and remove the carpet. They're, they're pretty old anyway. So you could do arts, things that would be more messy. You know, we would plan to pick one of those rooms and make something like that there.
You mentioned a youth center years ago.
A long time ago.
Yeah. Maybe coming to fruition.
Yeah, when I changed the grade configuration, I, everybody said to me, oh, now Pearlie's gonna be completely open. I said, no, it's not. Don't worry about it. But I was gonna put a youth center or eighteen, a youth center or the senior center there. And for lots of reasons, and I think we all made the right decision, the senior center, you know, belongs there and it's fine. And, but, and we never lost sight of the fact that there was no place to gather. But when we got that recent data from the survey that we did with the children, it was very obvious that they didn't feel like they had a place to call their own and they, you know, they didn't feel like the community respected them. So, you know, it made me think, you know, maybe we can figure out, maybe the timing is, is right now. And they're, so we're having a meeting with all the organizations that work with students, children, and we're gonna figure out, you know, is this a viable option that we could probably use that space? Colin, you know, has already said that, you know, the spaces he's using can, you know, can be, you know, reconstituted. And we're obviously that area where the library is would be available. We always want to keep the middle space open during the day because that's where we, if we have trainings or the fire station, fire department wants them, whatever. It's a, you know, it's a multi-purpose. With the technology equipment, we're probably gonna come to you looking for, you know, approval of surplus because it looks like there's a lot of stuff in there, but they tell me that it's not.
It's all old stuff from Pembroke, the old Pembroke, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we'll sort through that and, and we'll redirect a place, you know, where that could be. Barry, Barry used to hang out there because, when he was doing the buses. But the server or whatever, whatever he's using right now, he can easily take to Pembroke, which would be more convenient for him anyway. We won't like it because we like Barry coming around. He adds a lot of color when he comes in. But at the same time, you know, if it's easier for him to do his work there, it can be done remotely. So it would actually leave one, two, three spaces, plus that teacher's room could be a snack area, and then that big space could be used for things. So it's, it actually could be potentially, and then of course the gym would be available. And then the people who use the play, do plays there, you know, there's times between their plays, you know, students could use, could potentially use the stage. And then out back, if we do something like basketball courts or something, if the town decides to support something like that, you, you really would have a very, you know, a very comprehensive place, I think, where you could do some really good things for youth. But we have to make sure that it could work. And, you know, and we've never had money, right? So if Park and Rec has some money, you know, they come to the table, if the Georgetown cares, things come to the table. The PTA's already said they'd commit some money toward it. And as you know, a lot of these things can be done with no money. It could be done with a lot of donations. The one thing I want to be sure, and I haven't got it figured out exactly how to do it yet, but I want to make sure we talk to the kids or groups of kids because I want to make sure that we're gonna create a place they want to come. Won't do very much good to, you know, create a place and then, you know, a handful of kids come to it, right? So what is it that, you know, would be interesting to them? And then we also have the librarian involved because she set up a little, you remember, she set up a little teen space? It's not a big space, but it was what she had to do because she had so many kids that had no other place to go after school. So now if they want to just walk a couple blocks more, you know, the librarian is in with that too, you know? So I don't even know, she might want to reclaim her space if she had the chance to do it. But we, she's in the conversation as well, so.
So we'll see where it goes.
And that meeting's Monday. Are you coming?
I am, yes.
For Georgetown, KAFD. That's a good idea.
Well, I think it's, I think it's something that the town could really benefit from and it won't work if everybody doesn't get on the same page, so. And then the, and the police are coming too, you know, to make sure that we, we can get some programming, you know, through them as well, too.
Great.
The only question I had, and I don't know if it's, it might be a Colin slash Barry slash Ben. Set up 80 iPads for the fourth grade. Are those new devices or what's, because I know we got, we went one to one for the fourth grade last year. Are we using them or...
Oh, they're using them.
Okay.
Their whole celebration of growth presentation was, you know, integrating the iPads.
Okay.
They're definitely using them.
And we're upgrading the Pembroke wireless. That I wasn't really quite sure what was going on with the wireless network in Pembroke.
So the, 80 iPads at fourth grade, I think those are, they're already there, they're in the classrooms. Yeah, so it might just be making sure that those are in our, in jammed and in our management. They've been shuffled and shifted a lot in the last quarter of the school year. So that might just be making sure they're inventoried and they're where they need to be.
Okay.
And in terms of updating the wireless access points, we need to begin to turn over some of our access points because they will reach end of life. The clock is now ticking for the five-year end of life cycle, so we need to start replacing them year to year so that when they do reach end of life, they're all turned over.
Are we budgeting for that?
Yes.
We picked a number there.
We know what we should be budgeting for that.
We picked a small number to replace every year for the next five years.
So that basically becomes a yearly, yeah, just...
Just like the lease money, right? If you just keep there, you, you know, you can move forward.
Yeah. Does anybody have any other questions on it?
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Busy, busy. Thanks, Mike.
Good night, yeah.
And we haven't seen you since the graduation. Well, like in, formally, but what a great day.
It was great.
I mean, it was hot, but your guys did a great job.
Misting station.
Big fan, right?
That was nice. It was well done, well done. Sharon did a great job, too.
She did. Is it Disney? Misting station, yeah.
Everybody'd be crowded by the misting machine instead of sitting.
How can we budget for that? Put it in with the iPads.
Budget for a big tent and then you never have to worry about the weather.
There you go. I'll bring the easy up. Can we talk a little bit about the DECA versus the FBLA?
Yep, sure. So, the big problem is that, as you know, when Lisa Ryer took it, it was a very successful program. Lisa had decided, for whatever reason, that she didn't want to continue to do it. So we really struggled to get someone to do it. And Sarah Alrich stepped up and did a very nice job. But she said, I can't, I can't do this volume of work. It just doesn't work for me. So then, no one wanted it. So here we go again, right? So Lisa stepped up and said, you know, I'm aware of this organization. In fact, Dan does it in his school, because she mentioned that to me. This Future Business Leaders of America. And it, apparently it's similar in the sense that it's a smaller network of schools, definitely. And, but it's similar in, in terms of kids prepare and then compete. What she said the advantages were, to some extent, is you don't have to, DECA has a lot of rules about how many business classes you have to take and all that kind of stuff. And so Lisa said, you know, anyone in the school can participate. It doesn't just have to be kids who are on a business track. So that appealed to her. She also felt that the, the number of days out of school was a factor too. And, and many DECA families were putting out a lot of money to go to all of these competitions. You know, it was really, if it wasn't fundraised, it was coming out of their pocket. So for those reasons, and she included, you know, her thoughts in the email, she feels it's essential to continue to do something and we agree, this whole world, real world experience.
Yes, I absolutely agree with that.
We absolutely, but I've been worried about DECA for the last several years and its long-term viability. Now, one idea, if we don't want to do this, is I guess we could contact, you know, the DECA folks and say, you know, do you have anybody in any other town that you know, maybe is an assistant and would like to run a program? The downside to that is it's a lot of time out of school. So it would have to be, you know, they'd have to be in a position where they could actually come to Georgetown and, you know, be, be in place, you know, after school. So if you work too far away, that's not gonna happen very easily, so. And, you know, obviously we were looking to keep the relationships between the staff and the students. To, you know, that, we, we like that idea, better than getting someone from the outside. But that's, that's why I included Lisa's email, so you could see, you know, what she was proposing. And, you know, as I said, I, I didn't want to have nothing. And this wasn't an option that I, I think has some, you know, some good experience for kids. And it might actually even be more inclusive as opposed to exclusive because you can't meet the criteria.
Well, and it sounds like she would take it on.
She will. That she's proposing that she would, she would take it on, absolutely.
Well, her statement was interesting. If I'm here next year, I will take it on.
Oh, well, I can tell you about that. She, Lisa was working with Peter because one of the concerns that she had is she recognizes, you know, everybody recognizes their strength. She recognizes her strengths are high school. And, and she was assigned to middle school classes most of her schedule and she was not interested in continuing in Georgetown if that couldn't be rectified. So there have been some ways to look at the schedule where that she's not online to teach middle school next year. And so she feels that, you know, her expectation is she will be here next year and she would like to take this program on. So something continues for the kids.
Well, I would like to see something continue for the kids because we do have a large population of kids that participate in DECA.
And we do so well at DECA. So I'd hate to see this...
And I do think that the fact that they don't have to be enrolled in business courses will draw more kids in.
It might, yes. That's my hope.
So we're looking at, like, FBLA, it says, has 230,000 members, whereas DECA, I, it said, they had about 215,000 members. The thing that, that I'm concerned with is it showed, she had said Massachusetts only has about 22 schools. And FBLA's been around for a long time. So I'm just wondering what, why? Like, there's only 22, like, why DECA versus FBLA? I looked online today with plenty of, of reasoning behind it, but it all comes down to, I don't know.
What are you wondering about, why there aren't more schools in FBLA?
Mass, yeah.
I don't know the answer to that.
The, because it definitely sounded like DECA does more like the marketing and the subjective business interactions, whereas FBLA is more like the economics, the accounting, the social sciences. But I just wonder what the, what the draw is for DECA over FBLA.
Marketing's more fun than accounting?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
For some people. I'm just happy to see something. So that's great. And I'm glad that Lisa's coming back because I think she did great with that.
She did. And, you know, if, if we try it and it really doesn't work, I'm sure there's no reason why we, we wouldn't be able to rejoin DECA. We just have to make sure we can get an advisor who's really able to handle the responsibilities and really wants it because it's, it's a lot of work. I think we know that. You know, preparing the kids, doing all those role plays.
But has anybody posted out?
Because they take time to train the kids.
No, we haven't posted outside because we wanted to do something inside with our staff.
But I mean, even a parent that may want to take it on that has a business background.
Did we even look at that?
You know, has that even been approached?
You know, again, I...
Because it is all done outside of school.
It is, it is. I mean, they do do some things, you know, they get together during the school day when they have open time or they'll come in in the morning, you know, and, and do things. But honestly, we were trying to find a program that would be, you know, enhancing the curriculum, giving our kids schools, skills and actually doing something in-house. If the, if that doesn't work, then we certainly could post and advertise and we probably could get somebody. But it, you just have to make sure that all the logistics work. And then, you know, we kind of control our staff. It's a little harder to control somebody who, not control in a bad way, but, you know, we...
Be in touch.
They're in touch, yeah.
Know that you can always reach out.
It's easier to communicate with somebody that...
Have a responsive relationship.
Right. We find that sometimes even with our coaches, you know, like if there are people we can get too quickly, it's a little easier than, you know, doesn't stop us from hiring other people, to your point.
But again, my point is not all teachers make good coaches. And sometimes not all teachers might, you know, be great at DECA.
But Lisa would be very good at this program. I'm confident in that.
And the other schools are Belmont, Newton South, Newton North, Lexington, Milton, Natick High School. So I mean, there's some really, you know...
The only question I did have for her is those are not close to us, right? Whereas DECA, one of the advantages is it is close.
It's easy to go to North Pendover in January.
And if, and if we want to think about it more, we certainly can. It's not like we have to decide today. But I just wanted to put it on the radar screen because we do wanna, we do wanna know if we're moving forward or if we want to get more information on that, we certainly can. Dan, do, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you want to say anything about what kinds of, how does it work in your school?
The reason we went with Future Business Leaders is we wanted to afford opportunities to all students on all levels. There's always that middle level of students that we're always trying to reach. And we found that this program reached those students. It's flexible. You can lean in, lean out. Kids tend to lean in and out of clubs constantly. And we found that it served more students. We never had a DECA program. We did, it was decades ago, before my time. So I'm not that familiar with it. But with all clubs, is it equitable to all students? Can all students participate? Can they lean in easily without requirements? So that's kind of why we went with it.
And this is definitely more affordable, both for districts and for students. I went online and I saw, I mean, the, you know, the national dues is like 10, 10, nine dollars for Massachusetts per student. And then for, to establish a chapter, it's 20. I mean, that's extremely affordable compared to, I mean, I remember writing checks for, I don't know, 400, 200, like, 75 here.
Well, the reason we brought DECA here in the first place was because Lisa brought it here, right? So, you know, that's, that is the challenge, right? She really, she really got the program going and was really sustaining it. But then you see what happens when the person walks away.
Do we think some of these larger districts do both?
I don't know. Dan's duck didn't, I guess all we know from...
I'm just thinking like maybe a larger, like the Newtons or the Lexington's.
Right, would offer both, yeah.
Potentially. Because, because they are different in that.
No, I, I mean, I, I personally fully support it. I, I'm glad to see Lisa come back and I'm just glad to see that it's not gonna go away. So did she end up interviewing for the officers?
You know, I'm not sure. She, I know that was her plan. And she had done some work with the students to kind of, you know, okay, if we don't do DECA, here's another alternative. And I got the impression that she felt that there were, the kids were excited about it. They just want, the kids just want to have something that, you know, and that, and the skills that kids learned in DECA, I'm sure they learned them here as well. Just the idea of how do you make a presentation, how do you, you know, how do you, what kind of poise do you need?
Creative problem solving in 10 minutes, you know?
Yeah. So I don't know, I guess I don't know as much as obviously Lisa does. You know, I'm kind of going on her recommendation and Peter thought it was, you know, something to pursue as well because I, I think we're worried that, you know, with the DECA program, we just might not be able to sustain it. And then a lot of kids are gonna be disappointed, you know?
Do we think, I mean, I don't know what the timeline would be, but do we think that Lisa could come and tell us more about this?
You know, I asked her to, but there was some, what was going, what was going on in the interview today? She had another, oh, I think there was a DECA dinner or something tonight. Yeah, so that's why she couldn't come tonight. Because she would, she absolutely would have come. I did talk to her about it when she sent me the email. I did talk to her about it when she sent me the email.
I'm sure even if we sent her an email too, like, if you have any specific, um, questions about it, I'm sure she'll be more than happy to answer.
Absolutely, she would.
Any of those, but that's, um, you know, I hope, I hope the kids are excited that it's going to stay, because I know last year they were pretty concerned.
Right.
And I appreciate, um, Sarah's, if that's her name.
Oh, Sarah Aldrich.
For her, um, coming forward to take it over, because she had never been.
No.
Part of that before, so that was huge for her to do that.
No, and if she didn't pick it up, we wouldn't have it.
We definitely had a, right.
And we wouldn't necessarily.
On Wednesday, we needed somebody by Friday.
It was pretty desperate.
So that was nice, I think the kids really.
But, you know, again, I I think we could go back to DECA again if we just didn't feel that this worked out. But Lisa felt it was, and for Dan, to Dan's point, you know, maybe it is more inclusive. And we were always talking about wanting to be more inclusive. Maybe there are kids who could gain some wonderful skills and confidence and poise by participating in something like this.
Is there a maximum manageable size, though? Sixty-five students is, is a lot of cats to hurt. And while it's great to have a hundred, that's a different animal.
Yeah.
And and do we provide the same, I I totally understand the equitable and and making sure everyone can get in. But are we providing the same valuable experience if we're just letting anyone in the world who wants to join? Versus, because we don't have to have sixty-five in DECA, and maybe that.
No, we don't. We started from six.
Well, but but maybe thirty is a more manageable number than sixty-five, and it changes the, kind of the logistics of it. I'm just.
Yeah, I don't think we would.
More is not always better.
No, more is not always better. We agree with you. I think that what Lisa does, and I wouldn't think she'd do anything different in here, is she has a set of officers, and then the off, she uses the officers to do a lot of what you're talking about. Like, so they are the ones kind of mentoring the sort of newer members to the group. That Pam can attest to that, um, with her son's participation. So, yes, I don't think we'd ever want to have it get out of control, and we couldn't do something good with it. But I think that it's not just Lisa. I think she, and then when she goes to competition, she always has parents who come with her and help her. So they might not run it, to Suzanne's point, but they'll, you know, they they'll help her. Yeah, they'll step in and, you know, and help with the management tasks.
Yeah, she could always ask for that.
She always got that, yeah.
I remember preparing for DECA, she had a a potluck dinner, and she had the the students come and kind of, you know, do a little trial run thing, which I think was invaluable and really, really helped them. Um, and I don't know whether she asked for parent volunteers or not, but, you know, if she had another, any kind of event that really required a lot of of prep work and planning and all that, she could always ask for parent volunteers, and I'm sure she'd get them.
And the other people that do help out is, um, you know, the other business teachers have have helped her out. You know, Mary Lyon usually goes to the DECA competitions with her. Um, and, you know, Liz has certainly done that as well. So even though it wouldn't necessarily, I think they'll still tie it somewhat to business. You know, they'll, they'll, they'll hope that some of the kids who'd be most interested in this are kids that are taking some business classes. But it wouldn't exclude somebody else if they were willing to make the commitment of time and wanted to gain the skills. So we'll, we'll definitely have to look at the numbers, but, yeah, to your point, we don't want a hundred kids. That's not the goal, you know, but it's to say, if there are kids that we think would benefit, you know, that that they would know that maybe they could at least, you know, come in and and try it. Where now, they wouldn't even think of it, because they'd be disqualified, because they don't meet the basic criteria, right?
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, we want to talk about the Georgetown Middle High School Assistant Principal?
Yeah, so, Dan, do you want to come up? Because Dan, oh, so we have some new information for you. Here, we have, I don't know that, no, I don't think so. I think it's more informational. But this is new information. I did send you, I put it in Google Doc. Did you see it?
You did.
Hey, Colin. Colin is my biggest cheerleader for Google Docs. He's going to get me there.
So, Dan, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Excited to be here.
So here's what happened. Dan had, Dan had made an appointment with me today. We were going to go over this and other things. And so I said, oh, you know, so we're going through the, well, what kind of questions? I'm saying, what kind of questions, are they think they're going to ask this? I think they'd ask this, and I said, geez, I'm so sad, so sad you're not going to be able to come. He goes, I could come. It was next week he couldn't come, next meeting he couldn't come.
Good, that's great.
Perfect, if you'll stay, it'll be, it'll be all the help I need.
This is definitely important.
Yeah.
It is, so don't look at the ones that are in your packet.
Okay, okay.
Look at this one I just gave you.
Okay.
I just got more. Oh, there you go, Suzanne. That was there. Well, they're extra, did I make, I made eight. Oh, yeah, there's one down there. We can share. Yeah, here, you can have this one.
Oh, thank you.
There you go. All right, so, this is a very important decision, and it is an opportunity. I mean, we're sad that Heidi's going to be leaving, but we know she's going to, you know, do great things in her new job at Triton. And, you know, we just want to make sure, you know, we all wish her well, because she's done a wonderful job. Anything we've needed, Heidi has done, right? So when, when Heidi announced that she was going to be leaving, you know, there's always been conversations and questions about, well, what's the right structure? We've tried a lot, as you know. We've tried two principals, we've tried, uh, you know, a one, one, a split between the A.D. and the A.P. You know, we've tried, uh, we had Julie Lamoli here, and she, we had her be a coordinator. So there were, there's been a number, and and it's still been a kind of a revolving door. Um, Heidi's kind of stayed the longest in that position. Um, so, you know, it was an opportunity, right? So we, we've been, I talked to the people at the high school and the middle school. I talked to the administrative team. I've talked several times with Dan. Because the way I'm looking at this, this is really Dan's, Dan has to be a big part of this decision, because he, it's his team. Um, I can have my opinions, we can have our opinions, but at the end of the day, he's got to be the one who, you know, who can sell it and deliver it and work within the structure. So, um, you know, we, I'll just quickly review a couple of quick things, and then we'll get into this one, just because that's what we're here to talk about. So we talked about, um, the idea of having, of doing exactly what we do now. But we have found that that mix of the assistant principal and the A.D. has been problematic. So we thought, well, maybe, maybe what we're, maybe we made a mistake on that. Maybe it really, there are, there are certain duties that really do need to be done, and we're having to make them, make do with what we've got, but it's really not as effective as it needs to be. We also looked at, um, the idea of, because I know people get concerned when they think about, um, the middle school and the high school. And so what we've been saying, I've been saying for years, is we're talking about a six hundred and forty student school. Margaret runs a seven hundred and thirty student school. There are very different needs for the lower primary than there are for the sixth graders. And yet, we have one principal who covers all of those grades. The vision of the school is consistent, and accommodations are made based on the developmental needs of the students. We're not doing the same things with sixth graders as we're doing with kindergartners. So in my mind, with a school this size, I've always wondered why we think of it as two different schools. It's really an opportunity to look at it as a continuum of kids from seventh grade to twelfth grade. We have to face the fact that we do have kids that fall into what would normally be a middle school age in seven and eight, and we do need to accommodate for those needs. But if you have one principal for the school, what I'm not wanting to do is continue to perpetuate the fact that we've got a middle school that needs its own administrator, because I don't think that's necessary. And I don't think it's the best use of resources. So we started to look at that, and we said, well, all right, what if we do, what if we do one principal, one assistant principal, and then a middle school coordinator, kind of like what Chris Aldoni does? The problem with that in our, in our minds, and people have said, if you don't give it a title and you don't give it any authority, people are going to keep coming and going. You're not going to ever kind of get in front of that. And so that was a consideration when we talked about, well, does that stay on the table or doesn't it stay on the table? Because one of our goals is definitely to try and have a, you know, a retention, not to perpetuate this retention issue that we've had. Then we looked at, well, what if we did a principal, assistant principal, and then a dean of students? So the assistant principal wouldn't do discipline, but then Peter and everybody tells me that there's not a lot of discipline at the school. Like, to fund a position and then have that be discipline all day, wouldn't be the best use of somebody's time. And and if you didn't have them evaluate, then you really now have two evaluators that really just can't keep up with that. That's one of the challenges they're having right now, and have had, you know, with the three administrators, even with the halftime guy, was, you know, getting through the, all of the evaluations with the new evaluation system and the amount of time that really takes to do it well. It's really tough to do it with two people.
All right, let me ask you a question with, with that. What about the, um, the amount of time it takes, like, to deal with, like, a certain disciplinary issue? I I get it. I, I'm glad that we don't have huge discipline problems, but like, we had, we had talked to Guy on many occasions, and he says, you know, one discipline thing could take him from morning to afternoon. If it's like a bullying situation where he really has to go and take the kids out of school, or talk to a bunch of people. So what do you think about that?
Well, that's why, that's why when we get to talk about this model, we think it's a better distribution of, of that responsibility.
Okay.
Right? So we'll talk about that if, if, but, yes, it's true. Margaret could tell you the same thing. Hope could be tied up all day on one situation.
Right, and then nothing for the next couple of days are very little.
Right, so it's, well, I don't know, not, there's never nothing, but, no, I knew Margaret, I knew, I didn't have to look.
Not as much for the next couple of days?
I could feel Margaret's eyes on me saying, no, 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 no. So, I'll take that back, Margaret.
I'm talking discipline. I'm talking, I know there's always something to do.
A serious discipline thing, you know, yeah.
Okay.
So, so that was the thought there, was, okay, you know, and again, deans of students tend to want to be assistant principals, right?
And Guy used to be dean of students.
Yeah, we had, with one of the models, when he was the dean of student, when we had, um, the principal of the middle school and the principal of the high school, and then he was the dean of students for six through twelve, right? But then, you know, obviously, you know, when we had assistant principal, that was his wish. So, again, we're trying to talk about, you know, the stability, and then basically, what do we really need? Um, we had, uh, Peter had thrown an idea on the table, I think primarily to fund a full middle school principal. Um, and, you know, one of the arguments has been, for two grades, with two hundred kids, can we really justify the principal, a principal salary? I would say no. That's why I didn't recommend it. Um, what he was proposing was to pull in the fifth and sixth grade into the seven and eight, um, and have, so Margaret would be the principal K-four, and then that new person would be five, six, and then seven, eight. They would just have to travel. I can tell you honestly, I was a principal of two schools. I was never in the right place when I needed to be. I tried desperately to divide the time so that I never took away more or less from. It's a very difficult thing to do, and especially when you have them in the same building. So let's say a situation comes up. Hope is the principal for K-six, with a principal of K-four and five. It just, to me, the logistics of it just don't make it necessary. I think there's better models. Um, so I, that didn't, that, I know he spoke to some of you. It's just not, wouldn't be my choice. Um, I certainly could tell you more, but, you know, I think it, it upsets the apple cart at Pembroke, which we have a really nice stable situation right now. And, uh, I think that's just, it would just be too mushy, you know, to figure out who's got what line and who doesn't have it. All that, if they were in the same building, all over it. But the fact that it's, you know, it's two separate buildings, and one of the buildings has another principal. If it was just, we're moving the two grades to the wing of Pembroke, I mean, a wing of Pearlie, maybe, right? Because you physically could probably do that. But in the same school, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And I think that would be a community, the community might have some challenges or trouble with that as well. So, um, having said that, you know, um, in talking to, uh, Dan, and actually, I think Colin had come up with the same idea separately, um, we thought that we would propose this. Um, and I, what we added, what Dan and I spent time today doing in the last several pages, was talking about, because just to convince ourselves, you know, to make sure that we could explain it and and say, yeah, we, we believe in this, or we think this is worth a try. We sat down and we put what the, we thought the advantages were, and any little comments just kind of give you more information. And then we put the challenges, because with any model, you have challenges. There's no, as I said in the orange notes, there's no perfect model. And then the last page is just next steps. If we went with this model, what would we have to do? So, I'm going to let, I'm going to let Dan kind of give you an overview, and he can walk you through it. I'm happy to help, because I think I understand it. Um, and then we'll, you know, and just ask any questions along the way. You don't have to wait till the end or anything like that. All right, go ahead, Dan.
So before I get started, I've learned a lesson today. When you do a pop-in with Carol, you expect to be presenting later that evening.
It doesn't usually happen like that, does it?
So here I am. Uh, all good. We had a great day in brainstorming this out. Uh, there's a common theme here, and the question is why? And everyone wants to know why, why, and we'll come back to that throughout this entire, um, discussion. The common theme is what's best for kids in their social, emotional development and their academic development. Operations and management, yes, we have to take that in consideration. But when it comes down to it, it's the social, emotional development of kids, and what's best for those kids. And then we work with the operations piece. So this model here, I'll take you through the first page. So what you have in front of you is the student, um, experience over a six-year period. So first of all, having a middle school in the same building as a high school is such an asset. There are so many things you can capitalize on with vertical alignment, a curriculum, and department heads. Upper kids going down to the lower grades to speak to them about experiences. There are so many opportunities in one building, and I look at this as an opportunity that is just sitting there waiting to be another one to take advantage of. So when you have that, this is a great opportunity to develop the kids' social, emotional development. And not only we teach them content, but we teach them how to be young adults as well. So what you see here is the opportunity of developing that through their six years, uh, at the middle school and the high school. And I think that's, I honestly, I think that's pretty neat, that you get to see a kid's development from young adolescence to young adult, um, over six years. And that's one of the reasons why I'm here today, is I think that's really great to see kids develop over the years. And what this does is it fosters that development and that relationship building. So as you enter Georgetown Middle High School in seventh grade, uh, you're assigned to an assistant principal. As you progress each year, six years, and most schools are four, six years, you remain with that assistant principal through your entire career at the middle and high school. What that does, it allows the opportunity for the students, for the assistant principal, to get to know people as individuals and watch them grow, and be able to learn about, if there's a disability, to grow out of that disability, help identify this, that disability, to get to know students where they're afraid to lean out of their comfort zone. And they'll get to know them, to push them a little further, stretch a little further, go out for a sport or a club. There's a relationship-building theme through all of this. So one thing that I've learned over the years, uh, through research, is that kids, as they transition from model to model to model, and their education career from pre-K all the way up to twelfth grade, is disruption in their education, and you try to eliminate the disruptions as best as possible. So back to the asset, a middle school and the high school combined together, you're eliminating, or you're minimizing a disruption. So what this does is builds a relationship with an assistant principal in year one in their six-year career. So when the transition from middle school to high school happens, it minimizes that disruption. And it's a soft transition rather than a hard transition, going from the elementary school to the middle high school. That's a hard transition. And culturally, it's new rules, new faces, new everything, new bathroom, where is it? All of those things. So the asset is that we're in one building, and this capitalizes on that asset. So as a student enters into the middle high school, they will have a relationship with the same assistant principal as they rotate through each year, and they'll get to know, and that's an opportunity for the adult to also stretch their learning and stretch their comfort zones and build relationships. So that first sheet is a rotation, and an example of color coding, um, how that person, how that student would rotate through the school in their career. Maybe that's a good time to pause and answer questions.
Well, I definitely like the continuity, um, for the children and also for the administrative, because it is.
For the parents, too, because now you know, I'm dealing with this assistant principal.
Right, but it is always beneficial for the child to be able to see that same adult. And after that period of time, you would think that they would form a, you know, a special type of relationship that they maybe, after that time period, would be able to talk at that time, you know, about colleges and all the things that are going on, starting in like, you know, tenth grade, when you start to think about the higher education. That seventh and eighth grade is just such a, they really are a very, yeah, they are a very, uh, tough. Yeah, it's, it's just a tough time for kids, especially, I think, now. And our middle school has gone through so many changes, um, that I would love to see something that really focuses on them and the, um, just everything that they encounter right now in life, and just be able to thrive in that grade, you know, in that area. But, um, I I like the continuity of it.
So Pam, I actually thought of you when I was putting this model together, because you told me about the asset base, the survey. I, I can't really.
The attitudes and behavior survey.
Building their assets as they go through school, and relationship is the foundation of all assets.
Absolutely.
And this would actually build on what you mentioned at that last meeting we were at, strengthening those relationships and building those assets with kids and the adults. We always want a kid to turn, we want a hundred percent of our kids to turn to an adult that they feel comfortable with. We don't want one percent left out. So this would help foster those relationships, and the kids can turn, will feel comfortable turning to an adult. And after six years, um, you get to know them really well.
I mean, adult role models, that's an asset, and, and, you know, all the internal qualities of, of self, self-esteem, and, you know, believing in integrity, and, um, yeah, there are definitely a lot of assets that I could see. and, you know, believing in integrity and, um, yeah, there are definitely a lot of assets that I could see addressed in this way. I'm just, I'm trying to picture, so, and I, I love the idea of, of that because I remember I went, I told you I went to see Dr. Ned Hallwell.
Yeah, you did, yep.
And, you know, one of his, um, really important themes that he talks about is how important it is to have student, uh, and, you know, teacher and administrator relationships really, really strong, so everybody gets to know each other. So, like, what, what, can you give me any examples of how one of these assist, assistant principals would get to know and really, uh, become approachable and become, you know, a known quantity to the students?
So, as the assistant principal gets to know a student in seventh grade, um, that lifespan of six years that they had that relationship, they get to see that child develop slowly each year. Um, so concrete opportunities is simple, checking in academically, social emotionally, um, getting to know them as a person outside of the academics alone, uh, but as a person outside the school and what they're involved in. And this provides that opportunity to get to say, hey, I noticed that, uh, you dropped out of soccer, you were in, you loved it in seventh and eighth grade. Why aren't you involved with that?
Right.
That conversation is only built on relationships, so that's a concrete example.
You all have expressed interest in looping. This is a looping. This is, what this is, is this is looping. You're following the student all the way through it. And, you know, so that, that's kind of why we looked at this. So I knew the question, it'll be, the question will be why, like, what are we gonna do about the middle school? Like, so we're still thinking about it and there's a middle school and a high school. Instead of thinking it's a six through twelve, seven through twelve continuum, I said I wasn't gonna do that, and I did to Dan, seven through twelve continuum, with the need to do something special in the middle school. You don't have to have an assistant principal. Dan's the principal of the middle high school. What I am, why I am interested in looking at this is the perception is that Heidi ran the middle high school, I mean, ran the middle school. Right, that, am I right on that? Okay, so if you, if we recreate the same model, no matter how hard we try, we are gonna get the same result. Right? So each assistant principal gets a middle school grade and two high school grades. But the benefit to the student is, it's a continuum.
Right? What about for the teachers, like?
So the same thing happens to the teachers either way, because even right now, um, well, actually, right now, they would go to Guy for four years and I'm just gonna use Heidi's name because we, we just need a name. So Heidi did it for two years. So the thought here would be that the experience for the student, well, all that, what happened for the teachers is they're gonna get the sheet at the start of the year that says, here's the assistant principal that your grade is dealing with, basically. And within two years, I mean, there's only two people, so it's not very hard to get to know the style. So the process won't change. The process of how do you access, how does a teacher access the assistant principal, won't change. It might just be, it's a different person. Right, that's, that's, because, and if, if we, when you take this home and you have a chance to look at it if you want, and I apologize, it was really, I got it out to you before the meeting, but not, what time for you to really pour over it. But that is one of the things we wrote about in here, because that, what is the experience, what's, what we put it under challenges and we said, what does this look like for teachers? Right, so basically, that, that is what it looks like for teachers. So if Dan is the principal of the middle high school, as the principal, he knows, just like Margaret knows, that there are meetings she has that are just for her primary teachers or just for her, for her upper grade teachers, when she meets in her grade level meetings. Dan will meet with the middle school teachers if he has to meet with them as a group, because it's a middle school thing. Middle school will still run as a middle school, it just won't have, the body won't necessarily be a single body that everybody goes to. It'll be, who's the assistant principal? Dan is the one that needs to, you know, make sure the middle school gets what the middle school needs, make sure the high school gets what the high school needs.
So what would the relationship be with the middle school parents and?
Whoever the assistant principal is.
Well, I'm talking about, I'm, I'm talking about the, what will their relationship be with you?
So that, we did talk about that.
That's a good question. So day-to-day operations of, um, you know, attendance, the assistant principal, um, you know, it'd be the operations with the assistant principal. But the overall vision would be for me, if there, let's say bullying. If a parent has a concern about bullying about at the middle school, well, that's an overall question about culture. I take that on, and I look into that, and I get back to the parents with that. If it's an individual episode that happened during gym class, then the assistant principal would be the primary person for that. So I wouldn't necessarily take on the investigation, that's what assistant principals do. On more of the culture needs to shift, then how do I shift that?
But you, but Dan told me today that his practice is that anytime there's a disciplinary issue, it gets reported to him. So, he, so he knows that it happened.
Everything that's going on.
Right, so if he sees there's a profile or something that's going on, you know, then he would maybe meet with this, he would meet with the staff that's involved and say, okay, we gotta, we gotta figure this out.
Yeah, I would think that anything that goes on in the different buildings, that the principal should know about that.
Yeah.
One practice I have now that I'll probably carry over is weekly meetings with the school resource officer and the two assistant principals uh, about students. And the first part of the meeting is students only, what's going on, where are they at, has someone been hospitalized, we're transitioning in, out. So I'd probably bring that practice, because I find it informative that, I find it beneficial to be on top of all the discipline that's happening and be aware of that, so when the comment about culture is said, I have that information being fed to me, yeah. I wouldn't be excluded, but included, but not investigating an incident.
So we all know that not every personality does well with other personalities. So what if, what if, okay, good, because that's the thing, I mean, you could, you know, if, if that just doesn't work and then the kid's like, oh my goodness, or even the principal, the assistant principal is like, oh my goodness, I have this kid. We're just not meshing, you know? So would they have an opportunity to?
Well.
Yeah, well, that, that's a fair question.
No. We'll figure out how to work it out.
So we have this, um, at my current school, we have this model, and we're about thirteen hundred students, and I could probably count on the number of one, one hand, how many requests we have had to transfer from an assistant principal. In the event that we have transferred from an assistant principal is when something traumatic has happened to a student in the past and it has impacted them greatly, uh, and then we'll make a switch. But I can count on one hand how many times. But, um, just like conflict resolution, we need to learn to all work together and modeling for students. And, um, for thirteen, a school of thirteen hundred, like I said, all on one hand, I can count how many transfers we have done.
Oh, if you like, if you don't like the principal, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, right. Yeah, because right now, you've got, so there are similar structures in the school, so there's six through, seven through twelve department heads.
Yeah.
Right, so they cover both. There are guidance counselors that, you know, of course, Kelly does the, the, uh, middle school. And then, um, but, you know, we're, and then Julia does, Julia and Erin do the high school. But, you know, we're still a little worried about ninth grade. I'm always a little worried about ninth grade, you know, so does that, does that make, does it make sense to divide that differently? I mean, Dan won't know that till he goes there, but they all, they all follow the kids. Right, so they, they build those relationships. So it's, we have other sort of like models in the school already, we just have never done the assistant principal.
What I would, what I would love to see, and this might be a little going off topic, but I'm like varying a little bit. When you bring up guidance is, um, what I have found is the kids in, entering ninth grade will talk to the guidance counselor, their guidance counselor, um, just because of the transition into the high school. And then it seems like they don't talk to them until the middle of eleventh grade.
Right.
Right, and I, yeah, it's like.
That's common.
It's like the end of ninth grade to nothing in tenth.
Yep.
To.
It's weird.
Middle of eleventh, and then in twelfth grade, obviously, you see them quite a bit. I really wish that that, and a couple of parents have said that to me, I really wish that would be more, because I know my guidance counselor, I used to check in with them all the time.
Yeah, well, that's good to know.
Because a lot of the times, the guidance really doesn't know that student, because they only saw them entering.
Yeah.
And then, you know, in eleventh grade, so that whole, you know, end of ninth, tenth, beginning of eleventh, there's that void.
Yeah, I would have made the assumption that they were talking to them about, at least their schedule every year and, you know.
Well, they do, they do have to turn their schedule into them, but there's really, it's not much, it's not much talking to them. Like, they don't really know them until that, and I think our guidance, um, department is wonderful.
Awesome, they are.
You know, they, they do a great job.
Yeah, they're fantastic.
So I, I know if, if they knew that this was a concern, that they would do whatever they could to, to fix it. Uh, I would just love to see that happen.
Well, we, you know, we can certainly put that on the radar screen. I didn't know that happened, so.
I mean, we, you know, we, we have the advisory program going in the middle school, which I think is another great opportunity that assistant principals could get involved in that and get to know students through that.
Heidi did.
But I mean, I do, when I think about, you know, preparing for your, your bright future after high school, just developmentally. And I, I just, it's a rule of thumb that I say to my kids, and I apply it to college, too. The first two years, I want you just to embrace where you are and take all the opportunities and just, you know, really get to know what, what your loves are, what your strengths are, what your interests are. And then the second two years, that's the, the summer after sophomore year, I think that's the time to like, just be, get in thinking, just look around, you know? What would you like to do, where would you like to go? And to put that pressure, it, it can be viewed as pressure, you know? To put that pressure on them in tenth grade, I don't, you know.
Well, I'm not saying they should just, I'm saying in general, I'm not talking about college, I'm not talking.
Right, but when there's a guidance, guidance department in high school, and I know there's social emotional support, but a lot of, I mean, the guidance department, I wish we didn't have, I wish we could have more than two guidance, you know, counselors. I mean, I wish we could have four, um, but there's only so much that they, you know, they, they can do in a, in a day. And so, you know, you've got the social emotional support, but in the high school, there is a lot of, you know, college counseling and, like, I just feel like that, that is best started after the sophomore year.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking more like that they should know their guidance.
Sophomore year of, like, there's not a lot of contact.
Have a relationship with them and not just a need base.
In that year, and then it picked up, picks up again in your junior year.
Yeah, but no, it shouldn't just be for kids that are experiencing emotional issues or because of college. It, there should be a, a better relationship.
Well, and it also, to me, sounds like with this model, that the assistant principal will serve part of that role.
Right.
Um, I mean, you all know that I'm a huge advocate for looping, and I've done it a few times. And, you know, initially, I'm thinking, oh, well, six years, that's a long time. But at Pembroke, you have the principal and assistant principal and guidance with the kids for seven years. So why would that be different? Yeah, and, and again, it, from middle and high school, there's a whole host of different challenges and needs and, you know, development. So I can see that working. It works at the elementary level. We don't typically say, you know, K one, two, three, you have a principal and assistant, and now you're gonna transition, you know?
For a school this size.
Right.
That's, I mean, we're trying to also be using our resources as wisely as we can. Michael, what was your question? You've been waiting.
I've, I've been waiting, no, it's been good.
I noticed that.
I'm coming from a place of having a kindergartner, and high school is just this crazy world that I did a long time ago and.
Just wait.
When? I guess what is the interaction between the student and the assistant principal? When I went to, and this model totally changed. The assistant principal was the other guy in the office and you only ever talked to them if you got in trouble or something crazy happened. So I guess I'm curious what the relationship is in the ideal world and also in the real world. Is it beyond, is the assistant principal gonna know, you played soccer in seventh grade and now it's ninth grade and you don't? Is, like, is that, is there enough interaction and interplay between student and assistant principal for that to happen? Or is that, gee, it would be great if it could happen?
Great question. Um, when I went to school, the assistant principal is someone you avoided. And if they knew you, you were in trouble.
If you knew the assistant principal, there was something going on, there was a problem.
Absolutely, uh, and that has changed over the years. The role of assistant principal is building relationships and, uh, getting to know kids and being part of their community. It's just not the disciplinarian. Um, also part of the operations of the building, which we put a chart in here just to give you an idea of just the span that they have. Relation, we all know that relationships is a foundation to everything that we do, regardless of what industry you're in, relationship building. Some of the things that I've been part of, uh, through my career is making sure that my assistant principals have opportunities to connect with kids. Not just, just discipline, but opportunities for leadership. Uh, for example, I have one assistant principal right now that, uh, two years ago, she formed the student leadership team. Uh, anyone can join, any level, any grade, doesn't matter what GPA is, and you do fundraising throughout the school. And you host events. They did a, uh, you know, a stress relief during mid-year exams hosted by the student leadership team. It brought them all together, and that middle student seems to be gravitating to that. And that's always a concern of mine is that middle student that's not exceeding in all AP classes, doesn't get attention, so much attention for special ed book. How do we service them? So that's an expectation for the assistant principals today, is that they find opportunities to connect with kids outside of reading chapter six, line four of, you're suspended for four days. Role is well beyond that, and the, uh, social emotional development, transitioning. If a student's coming from outside placement, for whatever reason, back into the school, managing that, being a case manager, communicating to parents, um, understanding what the fears are and reducing the fears. They're more of a case manager than they are a disciplinarian. Um, and that's how assistant principals have pretty been, much been viewed. And one of the models for dean, uh, was thrown out because it's discipline, 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 discipline. And I'm thinking, you know, that, that's not longevity, most people don't last in that role. Uh, it's a burnout role. And they, it's a break-in, it's a step-in role, um, and where's the relationship building? So this was developed around relationships and getting to know folks. So that student leadership team is a perfect example of how one of my assistant principals reached out to kids. Um, I have another one that's running, um, it's called the Black in Belmont. We had our African-American black students not feeling valued through our service. It was glaringly upsetting, uh, and she is leading that group, so they feel included more into the community. So that's the roles that they play outside of discipline and outside of just coordinating the graduation and.
Look at Guy, look at Guy. Guy does discipline, but look at how the kids respond to him, all kids. So that, you know, he's not just the, the disciplinarian, I mean, the kids.
But it's also that visibility, because the middle school that I'm at, the, the, um, assistant principal, he's everywhere.
Yep.
And he's so visible, he has that relationship because he knows all the students.
Right, and that's gonna be Dan's job, too. Because Dan's plan is to be, you know, in both schools, you know, because I don't, see, Ryan, even I'm doing it, both schools. You know, at all the grades, at all floors, it are gonna, you know, he plans to be, you know, there every day, you know? So it, it's just, um, it's that we kind of just have a mindset, so it, you know? But I don't want anybody that's listening to this to think we're eliminating the middle school, we're not gonna have a middle school. That's not at all the message. We're just taking our resources and aligning them in ways that we think give kids more contact with a single adult that can help, can help them. And that can more evenly distribute the responsibilities. Because, you know, Heidi had two grades, Guy had four grades. You know, when Guy became the halftime AD, Heidi not only was in charge of the middle school, she also had to be pulled in different directions. And I think there was a lack of clarity. And when Dan came to visit that, that day, he learned a lot and heard a lot from people about sort of the expectations and who, who was responsible for what and the clarity. So we're just by, so when I said to him, let's, can you just write down, you know, typically, what the assist, how you would design the responsibilities? Because many people have said, we don't need that many administrators there. And the administrators are saying, yes, we do, right? And really felt the burden when Guy was kind of pulled away. So I said, we, we just need to make sure that we know how the two people would be fully utilized. And so when I looked at the list, I said, yeah, so I can see why they were scrambling and they were so concerned. Because there were a number of things, and obviously, the things on here represent a combination of sort of what's typical in terms of assistant principal responsibilities, what Dan's experience has been, and we took some of the ones that you had in your packet out because we just don't have them. Some we left in because Dan would like to include them, he would like to have them happen. Um, and, and they'll, when he hires the new person, he and the new person and Guy are gonna sit down and they will make the, they will make the list based on the strengths of the two individuals. This isn't by any means, this is just an illustration of how many things an assistant principal is responsible for, that maybe we didn't even know.
And so in reading all this, so we have principal, two assistant principals.
Yes.
And then Ryan will be the full-time AD.
I, I, my recommendation is, as long as we put in one of the responsibilities under Guy's column, that he will mentor Ryan. Right, that doesn't mean he's gonna run athletics, just means, you know, if, if it's something, he's the fallback. And if, if Guy, if Ryan needed some help on something, as long as Guy's other duties were manageable, managed, he would help.
But Guy's title is still assistant principal, not.
Right, so what Ryan would be, so what, how we do this is we use Heidi's money in the budget for the new person. And we already have Ryan in the budget. Right, so, so Ryan will, um, basically, Ryan will split between grounds, like we, like we talked about. He would do that, yeah.
So it wouldn't be full-time AD?
No.
So he'll be a part-time AD?
Well, he'll be whatever percentage AD he needs to be at the time, because he has the flexibility with the grounds. If his job was just to handle, let's just say, the Pearlie and middle high school fields, if that was his, how Mike decided to use him. He can do, if it's a heavy day of canceling games or something like that, remember, he has Cheryl, he's not gonna, he's not gonna lose Cheryl. Um, he could do that while he's working on the fields. Um, he could do that while he's working on the fields. Right, wherein you're a teacher and you're in class for three periods and you have work to do that comes up for A D, you can't just leave your classroom. There's more flexibility in this match.
Yeah, he's definitely not fifty fifty. I don't see him that way.
No.
I see him.
Definitely track that and maybe some seasons at some times, he needs to be almost full-time. And Mike will know that and he doesn't have to do fields in the in the winter, so, you know, there's flexibility there as well. But I think Ryan's learned a lot this year, Guy's done a great job mentoring him, you know, he gets along with everybody, he's highly efficient. So I I think if this is Ryan's long-term goal, I would have liked one more year, one more year, remember I told you I wanted that? But if Guy stays on as his mentor, then in in essence, you know, that that can be accomplished, I think.
So technically, we are adding a half of an administrator, technically.
Yes, technically, we are. You're right.
As opposed to what we've had.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to figure that, yeah, yeah, cause I I think I thought about it a little differently, but as you said that, I thought.
Right, so then Guy would take on two halves of an administrator because he's.
Guy, Guy, Guy will be a full-time administrator.
Well, right, well, again, so we're talking about halves because he was half A D. So you're taking the half A D away from him and making him half-half.
So what I would probably do.
Am I right in that thought?
Yep, yep, so what I would probably do in that case is I would, right now, part of Guy's salary is paid out of athletic revolving, I believe. Well, I would switch part of Ryan's salary to athletic revolving and take the budget money that you have for Ryan and switch, that's all you have, you have to move the money. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, but.
See, see the difference?
Right.
So he, so Guy, I mean, um, Ryan's still paid out of grounds and still paid out of A D, athletic.
Ryan is paid full-time out of the budget.
He's in the budget.
He's in the budget. He's paid full-time out of the budget.
Guy's the only piece in the athletic revolving.
But you're saying he'd be moved.
Well, I'm saying that piece could, Ryan could be put there and then the other half of, or the other part of Guy. That's right, that's what we have to figure that out, right, right.
Are we gonna talk about that tomorrow?
We can. We will. But again, you know, we, all the other option we weighed was, well, let's, maybe we just do the the principal, the assistant principal and a halftime administrator. But that.
Isn't that what you have now?
Well, sort of, and that's, but that's not going to long-term benefit the school. I mean, you might be able to get somebody who's retired, who might wanna work a few years and come in and, you know, work a half day. And you could give them as this, you could pick some of these jobs and just give them to them, but you you're gonna lose the interface with the kids. And I think that's what we're arguing for is, we wanna try to.
I think one of the biggest things that I hear and I, I'm, when I say it's not like a large amount of people, but it's enough that I recall. When they mention it, is that the administration is top-heavy at the middle high school. And, you know, you talk to the administrators and they say, no, you know, I I know it's a lot of work, I mean, I get it, just looking at this, I'm like, wow, it is a lot. How can we get the message out?
Right, so part of the way I think you get the message out is, you say we're, I think why people thought it was top-heavy. Is because they thought you took a grade out, you took a grade out, and now you've got one assistant principal for two hundred kids. Right, that would make you wonder, like, is that really necessary, right? So by doing this, you're basically saying each administrator is responsible for three grades and this list of tasks that they have to do. And so we're not allocating that money anymore to two grades. It looks, it looked like an unbalanced amount. Heidi, I can tell you, it probably wasn't, but the perception, when you look at it is. Why would you, why, you know, you took a grade out, why do you really need two administrators, two assistant principals? So that's why I said, the perception is gonna change if people see that there there's accountability and that, you know, things are getting done. You know, people are, things, people are getting back to each other, you know, it's not, you know, no one has an undoable job. Right, so there's no reason why, and and Dan needs to be the face of that school. And people have to believe that he's gonna be there seven through twelve. Right?
Yes.
So if if three working administrators are getting stuff done and the client, the 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 public, the kids, see that, you know. Oh, I saw Mister Richards today, he said hi to me, you know, he was at my thing, what do people say about me? Oh, they, the super tenets everywhere. Visibility counts for a lot of things, and I think right now there's some perception that, you know, everybody's not as visible as they could be. So you don't change attitudes till you change behaviors, and so if this works the way we think it's gonna work, the product's gonna be one that people are gonna say. Oh, that that makes more sense to me because now we don't have somebody just for two hundred kids. We basically are treating it as a six hundred and fifty student school. You still will have some people who think that way, Barbie, I don't think you can completely eliminate that. But I think what, one of the things that was perpetuating it is, you took a grade out and you didn't reduce the number of administrators. And now you have one person who's responsible for the middle school and there's only two hundred kids, and I get that.
Well, I think, you know, bringing back to your point, you know, where Margaret has a much larger school and it's Margaret and one.
And Hope, right, exactly.
And that's it.
And there are some different issues, you know, when you get to the middle high school and that's an acknowledgement, you're starting to do all the college stuff, you're starting to do, you know, there's sports, there's activities.
Sports, that's all handled by other people.
Yeah, not necessarily, not necessarily. Um, there are people like guidance.
Heidi handled sports and.
No, Heidi didn't handle sports, but yeah, I'm I'm sure Heidi did a lot of tasks that people didn't know she was doing because Guy couldn't really pull the weight. Of 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 a full-time administrator, cause he didn't have the time, right? But again, it's perception, right, it's not necessarily reality, but that's how people see it. So I think it's a, it's an opportunity, Dan's a new principal, right? He comes in, he says, this is something that I would like to try and this is why I wanna try it. And, you know, I think that gives us a fresh start, right? It doesn't, we don't go right back to the old model and the old perceptions, we gotta, it's a new start. And, you know, we, like anything, we do, we aren't doing it forever, if it doesn't work, right, we won't continue it.
I mean, this sounds to me, I like the fact that as you were saying, it sounds very student-centered, it sounds like it's something.
Was our goal.
Really going to. I mean, there's one thing, when you separate out a a junior high from a high school, you're kind of clumping different grades together. Whereas this model really looks at the different, unique developmental needs of each grade. Recognizing instead of just saying, these are middle school needs and these are high school needs. As, you know, I was just talking about just the difference between tenth grade and and eleventh grade. Um, they they are very, they're all very unique and different, I think this gives a real opportunity to administrators. Um, you know, to to recognize that and to address that. Um, so I I, I'm more impressed than I am. I had my doubts at first because it's it's a change. Yeah, yeah.
It's a big change.
But the more I hear about it, the more I I'm liking this.
I mean, I think you have, you have a transition, so you've two grade, two, two years that somebody has an assistant principal, let's say, in six and seven. And then they have another assistant principal for four, right? What this just does is it just extends that four to six, right? And it extends the two to six, right, so it it, we just think it's, we just think it's a continuum. It, again, we're not abandoning the middle school, we're not saying the middle school's now gonna become a mini high school. It, all that's changing is the body that the teachers deal with and that can, that you're gonna get an assistant principal. And you're not gonna have to get a new assistant principal, two years, two years, and then a new assistant principal. You're just gonna get used to the same assistant principal, it's just elongating it, right? So if you go to the advantages, I just wanna make sure we covered all of them. So the first one had to do with Dan being the, he really wants to be the principal of the middle high school, not just in name, only he wants to be the principal, right? So identifying somebody exclusively for the middle school doesn't really help us undo the perceptions that people currently have. Assistant principals follow the student for six years, I mean, that's, you got that. Provides softer transition, that's what we talked about in terms of the continuum and and not having the hard stop. Um, fosters relationships with parents and guardians over six years. So, you know, like I said, Margaret forms a relationship with with her people and, you know, has them all the way through. Um, and it's not confusing, who do I call on this? So for the day-to-day kind of operations, you know who your assistant principal is, that's who you contact, and as Dan said, you know, you can always request to talk to the principal. Right, that's, that that's not, the purpose of assistant principals isn't to keep people from the principal, you know. But the principal needs also to deal with the the larger issues, you know, and it's time to do that. Um, three administrat-, uh allows the equitable distribution of responsibilities and it creates flexibility within the model. That doesn't seem to be as prevalent now. Uh, all three administrators will have experience working with the students at all levels, so no longer is it, well, I'm a high school person or I'm a middle school person. One of the things we do wanna do, perhaps, cause we wanna round the team out, is to, when we post and advertise, to just put in one of the qualifications that we would. We would like middle school experience, just so we have that opportunity to have that, you know. That mo, the understanding of that model and the developmental needs, you know, sort of in the school. Do you have a question, Michael?
I do, I I guess I'm, and I'm, and I'm stuck, we've talked about it, we don't, I feel like we're going from a, almost a specialist model to a generalist model. A, a high school person and a middle school person, and yes, it was a wavy line, I I totally get that that Heidi did some, but. I think, I think we had someone who was very good at middle school, the age, and somebody who was very, the the students liked the high school. Relationship. And I, and I guess I don't know, but it it seems like you're taking, instead of getting somebody who's really good at that tricky middle school age. And somebody really good at that high school age, you're gonna get, I feel like it's easier to find the right people for that than somebody who. Can handle the entire seven to twelve continuum, and I and I get that it's good for the student, so they don't have the transition. But I also sort of like that transition of, you know, you were in middle school and that's one stage of life, and now we're in high school and the responsibility changes, expectations change. There's a, there's a, there is a hard stop of now you're a young, whatever you wanna call it, you're a young adult, you're now a much. You're in a different place in your life, even though you're thirteen years old. Do, and I guess you, I'm sure you're gonna say the right people are out there, and I don't doubt that for a moment. But it seems to me like you're going from a specialist to a generalist model, I I think is the only way I can.
Yeah. I can see what you're saying, Michael, but I think that the.
Because, I'm sorry. Speaking to, if Guy is speaking to a seventh grader. In this appointment, and then to a twelfth grader in this appointment, it's gonna be two completely different conversations. And I guess I'm, I'm, I'm curious how you could be good, you could be the best at both of those conversations. I'm not asking a question.
Like, when, when I think about it, um, like, we know that kids develop at different rates. So even though a student might be a middle school student, they may be, have a developmental immaturity. So they might really be like, and I guess I'll talk about my own daughter. When she went to the middle school as a sixth grader, she was really like a fourth grader. So, that being said, I would hope that teachers and administrators would. And and I believe they do, like, recognize that and are sort of able to kind of flow with. The students in front of them, and I also think about like Margaret. So she works with first kindergarten, first or second graders much differently than with a sixth grader. And that's like a continuum, and yet you could have a sixth grader who might developmentally be maturation of a third grader. And, you know, or a third grader who's overly mature.
Yeah.
That's how I'm trying to think about it.
Yep.
A lot of our thinking is factory model, and that's what schools were based on. It's a factory model, you are this age, your date of birth stamp is, you are now in. And that's not, that's our model in the United States, but it's not education to its fullest. To your point, you may have a ninth grader that acts like an eighth grader, that educator is skilled enough, and we currently have them in place. That how they deal with them in their immaturity or maturity, at whatever date stamp they're at, they adjust their language. They adjust their techniques, we do that now. Um, date stamping people is what we do, unfortunately, but we're educators. We're, we flow in and we flow out from the seventh to the eighth, based on what's brought to us. And not all kids, because of the date stamp, arrive with the same maturity.
So we have team leaders who are, you know, are, you know, help, really help to sort of work with teams. Um, we have department heads, right, and so Dan's plan is to have his leadership team be expanded. To, you know, all, all of those teams working, those people working together as a leadership team to look at the continuum. Um, we also have, uh, you know, those department heads and team leaders are also help with the alignment of curriculum. So the things they talk about are different than what the middle, the middle assistant principals necessarily talk about. Assistant principals are usually just engaged with kids, right, they're, they're engaged with students. But, you know, if there's issues around the curriculum, they, they don't, they don't deal with the administrator there, they deal with the department head, you know, so to speak. So I think it's really just creating a team, and I understand what you're saying about the specialist, that's part of the reason why we wanna look, you know, for somebody that has some middle school background. Just so we make sure that, you know, we, we're always mindful of that. But, you know, the way you find out about how to work with different levels is to do it. You know, I I can talk to high school kids, but my background is elementary, right? It's about how do you treat people with respect, it's really about how do you interface, how do you, you know, it it isn't really about, you know, people that can deal with older people can also deal with younger people. It's really about the human condition, and that's what we're trying to emphasize here, is that we want the tasks to be done, we want the building to be administered effi- efficiently. And the best use of the resources, we wanna give the kids the best opportunity we can. And we do know that, you know, it's a new model, right, so it it's gonna have its, its bumps. But I I think we just wanted to make sure that we had a solid foundation in terms of why we're doing it. Cause otherwise, easiest thing to do would just be, okay, just replace Heidi and do the same thing we're doing. But, you know, I hear it, Dan's heard it, you've heard it, that the weakest areas, the perception in the town is the weakest area here is the middle school. And I don't know why, you know, I I don't know why, I hear what people's perceptions are, so I don't want people to think we're abandoning the middle school concept, cause we're not. But what we're saying is that whoever's working with that group of people, including the principal, is gonna be working with the developmental needs of of the people. You know, it doesn't necessarily mean that one assistant principal is gonna be an expert at one thing, cause I'll tell you, Heidi was a high school teacher. She did do some work at the middle school and when, years ago, when John Foché was here, and did a phenomenal job as the team leader for eighth grade. But she made the decision to move to middle, to the high school level, cause that's what she really preferred. But, you know, she took one for the team and, you know, we needed somebody to sort of go there, but she does a lot of high school work too, she doesn't just do the middle school. I think the perception is she just does the middle school. Um, but, you know, again, it's, you know, there there's a lot of benefits to trying, I guess that's what we're, what we're trying to say. And then supporting, three, three administrators will all have experience working with the students. So you're right, Guy's got a little learning curve if there's something we were asking him to do with seventh graders, but he gets kids, right? He he now works with middle school kids, he often does the middle school lunch, you know, he's often called in, he and Heidi do a lot of investigations together. So I feel completely confident that Guy, you know, Guy would have a problem, and if we hired somebody that had a little bit of a middle school background, that would, I think. I think we'd have the, the thing you're worrying about, I think would be adjusted to. Um, supports the current, I, this, all we did here was just to say that we already have evidence that, you know, it is, has been successful when we had the same person. Follow, you know, whether it's the curriculum, whether it's, you know, the students. Um, it does provide two full-time assistant principals and the athletic director's position is redirected, you know, we'll see if that works the way we hope it will. And then, um, the assistant principal's title is likely to reduce the rotation of personnel, because it's the title. Heidi said that to me when we were talking about, well, maybe we'll do a coordination, she said, I love a lot of that idea, but she said, people won't stay. They'll wanna be an assistant principal, and then if we don't have one here, then they're gonna go someplace else. So, you know, just looking at, you know, from perspective of people who are in the job, that made some sense to me. Terms of challenges, so the potential conflict with the assistant principal and the students and families, we talked a little bit about that. So how would that, you know, how would that work, that's where Dan would get involved and, you know, try to, you know, figure out a happy medium there. And most of the time, the longer you work with somebody, you know, to the looping point, I remember teachers that would loop and it'd be like, oh my god, are you kidding? I've gotta have that child again, and the child saying, oh my god, I gotta have that teacher again, but it's very different the second year, right? Because September is like December. You remember what, all the stuff you worked on last year, you don't have to start the full year, the school year, getting to know each other again. You, you know, it, you get, you come to a happy medium, I can tell you that's true. Um, how to change the percip-, uh, perception that, um, if there is not designated assistant principal at the middle school, the middle school needs will not be met. I hope we talked about, about that, that the goal, and and Dan put together some points here. You know, the principal oversees the entire school, but will be present daily in both the middle school, the middle high school grades, every grade, meeting regularly with the staff and students. So if there's something that's unique to the seventh and eighth grade, he's gonna meet with the seventh and eighth grade teachers, right, or he's gonna pull in the ti- team leaders. He's, he's the voice of the school, all the, all the grades. I think that's what, number one thing we're trying to struc-, we're trying to structure around, so that can actually be a reality. Principal and assistant principals will be collaborating, we, we talked about that. Principal will be visible, and then principal will be, be an advocate for middle school programming and the needs of students. So we are not taking a step back, we are trying to take a step forward. In terms of what happens if there's a student concern that involves multiple grades, right? Because if you, right now, if it's a middle school issue, Heidi deals with, and if it's seventh and eighth graders, she pulls them together, and so, you know, good question, right? So the answer to the question is, in whatever grade the issue happened, so let's say it's a seventh grade issue, whoever's the seventh grade assistant principal is gonna deal with the situation. If it involves eighth graders, then they'll just consult with the eighth, just like they do now, just like they do now. Heidi will pull in Guy, and they'll figure out together, you know, what needs to be done. So it really is on a case-by-case basis, but, you know, there'll be collaboration where there needs to be, and then there'll be, you know, action taken by the assistant principal who's, you know, who's the principal, assistant principal of most of the kids that are involved in the situation. The one question we don't have a good answer for right now is, where are the assistant principals gonna be located? Because this, this could be potentially challenging, because we will need to utilize the third floor room, we will need to utilize that, because we need a space. But if you're a seventh grade principal, no problem, you're up there, that's your space. But if you're an eighth grade principal, and you're downstairs, we're not gonna want middle school kids to traipse downstairs to see this, so we're gonna have to figure out like a dual use of that space. It should only be an issue for, well, no, it wouldn't be, because the, the typical principal who's been the middle school principal will also have high school responsibilities. So we have, we have to work that out, we haven't got the answer to that. And what does it look like for teachers, you and I talked, we talked about that. So I don't know if there's anything else you can think of that we haven't thought of in terms of, terms of challenges or advantages, but we'd love to hear them, so please send that information to us. And then in terms of next steps, we would need to, well, they're probably not in priority order. The first thing we need, we need to do is post and hire, that, that's job one. And we also have to, once they, they, we are on board, we have to agree on what the duties are, what's the split in duties based on the strength. We have to, you know, talk to the teachers about change that's gonna happen, and let them have a chance to sort of, you know, vet it and, and let us know what they're, what they're concerned about, if there's anything. We have to identify the office location, so we need to know where people are, and we do need to develop a notification process for parents, probably like in Dan's back-to-school letter, welcome, here I am, you know, some changes you can look forward to, and then a little bit about what it's gonna look like for them. So that, and I, I could always write a blog, too, about it, you know, I'm happy to do that. But that's, that would be, that would be the, the first next steps, I think, that we, we agreed that we'd have to really make sure it got done.
Yeah, I think this summer, I think there will be a lot of parents that will suffer some angst with this, because it's, it's two-
It's different.
Two different people, you know? There's only one-
Well, for them, it won't be two different people.
No, but the, the school itself, so I think, I think just the perception-
Oh, oh, different people.
Yeah, I think it's just the-
The principal and the one assistant.
I love change, we all know, people don't though.
Yeah, I know, it's true.
So I think it will be like people will just, they won't, they may not understand the reasoning behind the move, and you know as well as I do, people will, you know-
That's true.
Try and figure out what it is and, and not know the correct reasons why people left, but I think, I think a blog would be a great idea.
A blog will be a good idea, and, and, you know, may, nothing stops us in September for, you know, when Dan could have a welcome back, you know, session, and, you know, ask me any, you know, Q and A, ask me any questions that you want, and we could certainly put this discussion on the table. Better to just talk about it if there are questions.
Should I say the F-word?
Forum?
Forum.
We have to have a forum, but I'm a tough dog for next year. Suzie was like-
I was like, yeah Barbie, go for it.
Well, maybe like a, maybe a forum to introduce-
Yeah, so welcome in.
The two new administrators. Right, and welcome everybody, yeah.
Well, I would have to say, as a parent, I would feel at ease knowing that there is a grade seven to twelve principal. Technically, the middle school hasn't really had a principal, I mean-
They haven't felt that.
Yeah, entitled, yeah, entitled they have, yeah.
The title, so, and we know the title brings perception and-
Yes, it does.
Whatever, so, I don't know, but that's personal to me, I would-
Yeah, we've had a fantastic team at the, at the school, you know, it's, they've done great and they've worked it out, they, they like each other, they enjoy working together, and they've accomplished great things. But if we have an opportunity, since we're gonna have new, new, new people, right? And this is a model Dan has used, so he's familiar with how it, it could work. You know, Guy, I think, would assimilate to it well, and you've got a new person coming on board. It's really, you know, how do we work, you know, we work it through so people feel heard and understand that there, it's not gonna be a deep departure from everything we're ever, we've ever done. We're, we're changing the model for APs. We're still maintaining our curriculum, we're still maintaining everything else that we're doing, it's just an opportunity to look at how we distribute the responsibilities of administrators.
We might wanna have an article in the Georgetown Record, just introducing the two new administrators at the high school, too.
Yeah, well-
And then in that article-
Have to hire them first.
What? I'm thinking August, I don't know. I know people don't read the paper in August, but still, you know, you know. Maybe September, I, maybe early September, I don't know.
We'll, we'll find a way to get it.
And in the article, you could introduce who, you know, the individuals are, but also talk about the new structure.
So, so Dan, this is currently the structure you have at Belmont High?
It's very similar, yes.
Very similar, okay.
And you've had it for how long?
Well, I've been there twelve years, at least twelve years, and, well, before I existed, yeah. And we talked a lot about the symptoms on the, that happen when there's a model like this, the symptoms, but let's, the root, again, is the social-emotional development and the relationship building that we're trying to develop with kids. And you'll hear me say that probably a lot, and hopefully for many, many, many years, but it comes right back to that root of our kids and their development, and we're developing humans and not cogs, and this is, this is how we develop great people, is great relationships and their social-emotional development over six wonderful years. I'm so happy it's six years, not four. Again, leveraging the asset of six years to our benefit.
I love hearing you say that. Repetition is a very effective way of teaching. Keep right on going, please.
Now, did, when the superintendent notified you of the assistant principal leaving, how did that make you feel? Were you shocked? Were you looking at it as, great, I can, you know, go and hire, not anything personal against Heidi, but, you know, can I-
Curious to see how you're gonna answer this question.
No problem.
He's told me before, but let's see how he does.
Yeah. So when I came to Georgetown, Heidi was my tour guide for the entire day, when I did the full day. I was really impressed in how she, and I describe it this way, glided through that building with relationships from classroom to classroom. And I thought, my gosh, here's my life raft right here when I first arrived. Amazing, amazing. She didn't stumble, it came natural, I, highly impressed, and I even said to Carol that I'm very excited to work with Heidi, and I can learn a lot from her. I was sad to see her go. I'm very sad. And she is definitely a fantastic educator, and just a really good person on top of it, from what, my short time with her.
You're right.
So sad to go, but an opportunity as well, so mixed feelings.
Yeah, so I'm thinking like that he was just concerned that he didn't have, like, you know, the support that he would need to come on board after being in a district for so long, you know, and come into a new one, so I hope that you still feel that you'll get the support, you know, from-
Absolutely. And I've said this to Carol, and I've said this publicly at the meetings, and repetition is a good thing. The reason why I chose Georgetown is because of the people. It's because of the people, I had many interviews and I had other opportunities. It's the people that I came to visit, it's the people, the students that I sat and had lunch with, this casualness of the school committee able to work. I watched it on television to make sure I knew what I was getting into.
Oh, boy.
Honestly, it's all good.
You're the only one.
It really is. It does come down to the people, it really does, and I wanna be part of a really healthy culture that operates at full capacity, and that's why I'm here.
Great. Looking forward to it.
You're welcome, we're so glad you're here.
I'm the same here.
And I'm so glad that you were available, Dan, that would've been a very different conversation if you weren't here.
Yeah.
Indeed.
Thank you so much.
So I feel very supported to answer your question, and it's still very exciting.
Yeah.
Great.
And you'll be on board July first?
July first, yep. And I've been popping in and out for the last couple of weeks or so, and a few meetings to get a head start.
That's coming right up.
It is.
Okay, so I have a question for you.
Sure.
Did the gentleman from New Edition come to your school?
The what? What was your question?
Yes.
The gentleman from New Edition? From New Edition, the band?
Who was that? New Edition?
New Edition.
Is he, is that a band?
Bobby Brown?
Not Bobby Brown, it's-
No, but it, but he was in-
Bel Bib Devaux.
Oh, was that?
Yes, it was Viv who came from-
Oh, it was Viv, okay, so it wasn't New Edition, it was Bel Bib Devaux.
Yes.
So did he go to Belmont?
He did.
He did?
Yes, he, I guess the, the big record hit was in, when he was in middle school, and I heard stories of him taking the limo to high school and dropping off in ninth grade, and he dropped out in tenth grade, and his career still went well, and now he's come back with his honorary degree, and we just did that last week.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that, yeah. I saw that. And I asked Carol, and she said, oh, he didn't mention anything to me about it.
Yeah.
But that's, that's neat.
It's never too late.
Yeah. I mean, he's gotta be like, he's gotta be in his forties, right?
He's about the same age I am, but it's not forty, he's a little older. So, that's all I'm saying about that.
Oh, that's funny, that's funny. That's neat.
Okay. So, Dan, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Same here. Have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
Good night.
Okay, Colin.
Colin. Colin's got good stuff to talk about.
Yeah, yeah, very.
Yes, oh yes, very exciting stuff.
Got like fourteen highlights in here for you.
My, my perspective.
I know. Today I was going all over this.
Well, that's good to hear. So I, I'll give, I'll give the, give the highlights, and then answer any questions, and then, you know, as with all curriculum proposals, we have a couple of weeks for you guys to, to dive in, to look at samples, to follow up with questions to me, and, you know, then, then make our decisions. But just a brief overview of the two things that, that I'd like to propose as curriculum changes for next year. The first is one that I'd mentioned at a previous meeting when I was sitting up here, is a social-emotional learning program and curriculum for our students at Pembroke, which is the Second Step program, which I know I've used in a previous elementary school that I worked in, I know Carol has used it, I know Ms. Doran has used it at a previous school that she was at.
I've used it, like CCD.
Great, so, um, yeah. And, and everyone that I've talked to about it has had really good things and positive things to say about it, my own experience has been very positive using Second Step as well. So the reasoning behind needing a social-emotional learning program is one, the, the one that we are currently using is Responsive Classroom. And the two things that, that I have seen with Responsive Classroom is, one, since its launch and since its initial training, we've, there has been some teacher turnover at Pembroke, and those new teachers have not gotten the training to lead a Responsive Classroom class, and are still implementing it. And the other thing that, that we've seen with Responsive Classroom is, there's a significant time commitment that's needed every day to run a morning meeting, which could be used as instructional time, if we had another program to supplement that. And what I'm suggesting is a Second Step program, which is really well-known, it's been, being used, you know, in many districts, and I was actually at a conference the other day, and I went to a PBIS workshop from a district that, that went full PBIS, their whole district bought in, they were in year five of implementation, and I thought, oh, this is great, I could, you know, take some things away. And really, I didn't learn anything that I didn't already know about PBIS, but the one takeaway that I had was, they said, you know, and in year five of our implementation, we rolled out the Second Step curriculum to all of our schools, and it's really helped, you know, reinforce all the expectations that we've been preaching in PBIS. So I was like, ah, dang, great.
And the teachers actually identified, when we were talking about getting ready for the forum, we were talking about, you know, what we're using to, you know, to work with students so that, you know, because they wanna know about, what's the discipline plan, process for the school? The teachers actually said that that was one of the things that they really could benefit from.
Yeah.
Which was to have, you know, there's the expectations, but then there's, like, what do you do to teach those skills?
Right.
And so that's-
And, you know, as, as we've said for, for, you know, a few years now, PBIS is the framework, and it's kind of the, the skeleton that everything is, is based off of, but it doesn't have those concrete tangible, here's the lesson, here's the structure, here's the, the skill that you need to use to meet that expectation, and that's where Second Step can come into play.
It's not a PBS PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, it's not a curriculum.
That's right.
It's a framework.
That's right, so where PB-
It's a curriculum.
Right, so where Second Step comes in is, the, the areas that it focuses on are Skills for Learning, Empathy, Emotion Management, and Problem Solving. All of those soft skills, those life skills that we need our students to have, starting in kindergarten and moving all the way through, and this is a very concrete program that will give our students and our teachers the actual structures and, and lessons to meet, to, you know, learn those skills.
And so it says-
It ties right into CARES, Margaret's CARES, ties nicely.
And it says that there are, it's grade-specific.
Yes, yes, which is really important when looking for a program, because, one, it needs to be developmentally appropriate, starting in our, in our youngsters, they need to understand that these complex, you know, feelings and issues that can come up, they need to be relatable and explained to them in a way that they can understand. And then on the other side, when you get into the older grades, some programs can feel hokey, or lame, or just kinda, you know-
Just don't land.
Yeah. And what I found with Second Step, because I used it in my school that was K eight, the middle schoolers still really responded well to the lessons that were in the middle school programs.
So can you just run through a quick lesson?
Yes, absolutely. So I'll take one from a primary grade that I, that really sticks in, in my mind, and it was early in the year under the Skills for Learning kind of theme, and it was all about focusing attention, right? It was for those kindergarten, kindergartners and first graders, and working really hard on following directions, and you need to focus attention on the thing that is, you know, really, really important to what you need to be working on. And there's a lesson that goes with it, and for the primary grades, teachers have a kit, and in the kit for the primary grades are big cards that are used that have big pictures big pictures on them, and then they also are little puppets that act out a vignette that the teacher kind of has scripted for them, so they introduce the lesson using these puppets. But what sticks in my mind for that focusing attention lesson was the skill of your attention goggles. So, there's a, there's a, you know, a little prompt that a teacher can say, okay, everyone put on their attention goggles, and the students literally, like, focus their attention using their attention goggles. And the reason that that one sticks in my mind is, that's taught over, you know, it's one lesson that's taught, and reinforced throughout the week. But when I would go into a class in December, and in January, and in March of that same class, even though that lesson was taught in September, October, teacher would say, okay, kids, I need us to focus our eyes up here, you'd still see students doing this. So, it just sticks with me because it's an effective lesson to, that can carry on throughout, it doesn't just, you know, you hit it and then you move on. Um, the other reason that I like it is that it can translate, not just to what's happening in the classroom, but the way that it's reinforced with the follow-up activities is, all right, today we learned about, you know, whatever the skill was, how can that, as we're getting ready and, you know, getting our jacket on to go out for recess, how can that skill apply for, let's say, a conflict you're having on the playground today? So, it can address some of those issues in the unstructured spaces in the school as well.
At the upper grades, I know a lot of those cards are scenarios, so the students have to sort of think about, well, what are all the options that I have, right? What's, and then what's the best option?
Yeah, so the-
So-
So, an example, uh, that's in your packet here, this would be, um, obviously larger laminated color card that a teacher would pull out of his or her box, and this is kind of the launch to the lesson, and, uh, the teacher lesson is on the backside of that card. Um, so this is, you know, you have a quick discussion about, you know, these two students are working on a project together, do you think they're working well together? How do you, how do you think that they're going on this project? You have a short discussion.
This is so similar to what the SLPs work with certain students to get them to understand what's-
Exactly.
So, now you're teaching, so now the teacher is an SLP teaching the whole class social situations and issues.
So, with this, so with this, you have that initial discussion, there are video clips that then play this scenario out, so you actually watch the students, I think this is a, what did I say, it wasn't a packet, fifth grade, I want to say?
We had them on YouTube.
Yeah, fifth grade. So, this is, so these are fifth graders, they act out their scene, they're working in a group project, there's a pause button there where they, you know, the, you've seen these students have a conflict, and then the students in the class brainstorm, you know, what do they need to do, what's, what have we learned so that these students can, can calm down? What strategies have we already learned that they can cope and they can calm down? And then, how do they apply those calming down strategies that earlier in the year were just a personal calming down to, now I'm working with someone else, how can we calm down together, how can we, you know, resolve this conflict that we're having for this class assignment? You have that discussion, you hit play, you see how it resolves in the, in the vignette, and then you have your, you know, kind of wrap-up activity, um, for that Second Step lesson. That all happens within one day of the week, and then I've also included kind of the follow-up sheet here that would be given to, to a teacher, as well as the home link for something that can be sent home to say, hey, parents, here's what we're working on this week for our Second Step lesson, there are a few suggestions here of conversations you can have with your child, things that you can practice, a song that, you know, you can find on YouTube and, and sing with them before they, you know, head off to brush their teeth, whatever it may be, um, to constantly reinforce that lesson for the week.
So, that was one of the questions I had, so, what I read today is that each family, or, well, I don't know how we would do it, would have an activation code, that they could go-
Yep.
And, and, so, because with the, the four core programs, obviously, one of, one of them would be to engage families, so even be on the school day, having the, the, um, parents talk about it, reinforce what they learned. So, that would happen?
Yeah.
They'd all be able to access it from their house and-
Yep, that's right. And, and I think that's, the through line for Second Step is that it is constantly being reinforced in all areas of not only a student's school day, but also at home, because these skills, obviously, we want them to be translated when a student exits our-
I'm taking these attention goggles.
Yeah.
That's great.
I, so, I may, I may be putting the cart before the horse here, but do you have, um, a professional development plan for rolling this out?
Yeah, so, uh, another benefit of Second Step is, you know, I, I obviously contacted the sales rep and said, you know, what, what do we need to do to train our staff to make sure that they're all up and running, and, um, basically it came back and said, since everything is pretty well laid out for teachers, they don't offer like a specific training plan, just because there hasn't always been a need for it, because it has been easy to roll out, but we know that we don't want to catch our teachers off guard and say, here, you know, day one, start this. So, we've been talking about focusing our, the whole kind of PD calendar next year around social emotional learning, um, inclusive practices, and, um, yeah, that was about, that was, that was, that was really, it, so there would certainly be time within that PD calendar early in the year to give teachers the time, while they don't offer like a, we'll send the rep, we'll send a trainer to you, they do have, um, web series and webinars and video, you know, uh, kind of PowerPoints that you can move through that we would want to give our teachers time to, you know, work through those.
So, it might be something you would present.
Right.
Yes.
Right, or we would give teams the, the time to say, here are the resources that Second Step provides to make sure that you understand the program, you have these hours to go work in your teams to do that.
Yeah, the online support that I found was, was really good, Jay, just looking through it.
Did you just Google Second Step, Barbie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then when I was looking at like the supplemental materials that they showed, which would, um, give people ideas for like books and, and things, um, you know, discussing feelings, empathy, problem solving, um, playing fear, skills for learning.
Yep.
Uh, and they focused a lot on not just feelings, but how to, first of all, control your feelings, and then to know why you're feeling that way.
Exactly.
Building strategies, yeah.
Yeah, I thought, I, I was impressed with it, I did find that Belmont, um, uses it, and Newton, which is funny because they're the same, too, that-
Right, yeah.
But, um-
FBLA.
Yeah, I mean, I, the, the reviews on it were very, very good.
Yeah, it's, it's well, it's well researched, and it's not a new program, and it's, and it's, um, well-regarded, you know.
And I think-
It's recently revised, it's been up-
Yeah, they have been revised.
Yeah, the middle school especially, the middle school models have moved from more of a kit-based model, like the elementary, to an online licensure, um, so everything's basically digital.
It sounds more complex than I remember it being, which is probably good.
So, that's a good example of something that we could eventually consider, which is adopting Second Step in grade seven and eight. So, you have that continuum, and it's unique to the middle school based on the middle school's needs, right? And, but it, you know, it's still seven through 12 continuum, you know? So, that's a good example. You know, same thing with STEM scopes, we're not ready to do it yet, but we're thinking that maybe in another year, we might do that, and again, that, that's, again, unique, it prepares the students for the opportunity when they get to high school to take a certain math sequence.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so we, that's, that just gave me an opportunity to illustrate that it's about the grades, not necessarily about the-
Mm.
So, we, we'll vote on it next time.
Yeah.
Cool.
So, when you, the only question I had, um, I hear the word kit, and I, in, in my mind, it sounds like it's something that's going to be used up. Is it kit in the sense of it's puppets and-
Yeah, there's no consumables for it. Um, it, it's, it's really, it's week 10, I'm going to take out my, my, my number 10 lesson plan, most of those for, for, I think, KDA 3 certainly have like the, the physical, like laminated cards that basically has the, yeah.
Well, on something like, like this, you know, we would take that out.
Right, right.
This is like the lesson, so that would be in it.
Yeah, so, so it's really a-
It's a consumables question, yeah.
No consumables, when we have them, we have them.
Right, okay.
But are there handouts? I mean, could you, could you-
There are worksheets.
Yeah, yeah.
There's worksheets and all that, that's what I remember.
Yeah, 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 but those, I mean, we, we would make those copies and-
Yes, no, no, yes.
It was a blog, too, that a teacher had on there that, like, gave all different types of additional worksheets, like supplemental stuff.
So, they could also make their own?
Yeah, that he's up as well.
Yeah, it was really, yeah, it was.
And they've moved from physical, like, CDs and DVDs to having things online, because no one has a CD drive in their computer anymore, so-
Margaret, did you say that you were going to identify a time in the day that the teachers were going to be able to teach this curriculum, when you did the master schedule? Okay, because I thought we talked, I thought that you had said that, that, like, just a, a social emotional time, that kid, okay, okay, my mistake then.
Sixth grade, if I'm not-
Oh, maybe that's what I'm remembering. So, it was like, it's like in this, so, in the day there'd be, or certain days, there'd be a chunk of time that was kind of, so we made sure there was, because the first question that everybody ever asks when you buy a new curriculum, right, is, when am I going to fit that in, right? So, I know that's something that, um, we've been talking about, is making sure that there, we know there's time, you know, and-
Well, I mean, we know that there's time if, if the, the morning meeting from Responsive Classroom is, is being now transitioned to Second Step, teachers have that built-in 15, 20-minute meeting already every day in, in their class, and, well, this is a, a one standalone lesson per week that is consistently reinforced throughout the week, you really just need that, that day to teach the actual lesson.
Yeah, when I did it, we always did it Friday afternoon, because it was fun, and then, you know, you could reinforce it, but it-
We did Tuesday afternoon, because Mondays and Fridays are funky.
Yeah, well, Mondays, definitely.
Well, um, so I guess my question is, are we taking away the morning meeting component? Or?
So, yes, I, if, if, I think-
Taking the Responsive Classroom out?
Yeah, we would, we would be removing the Responsive Classroom, and I know Margaret has some great ideas to, to start the day off, so there's, there's still a, let's all get together and let's all start the day with something, but it wouldn't be as, as regimented and then probably as lengthy as a morning meeting takes every morning.
Is, is this end-of-year money, or is it school choice?
I love when he gets right to the point. Second Step, where do we go with that? We have, we have two funding sources. No, it wasn't end-of-year money.
Okay.
Oh, I know where this is coming from. Margaret has a number of little accounts, donation accounts, that she's still got money in, and so we're-
Oh, we did write it down.
Yes, I think I wrote that in the orange notes, and, and so we're just going to take, we're going to take that money and not leave her with not anything, she's going to still have money to do her things that she needs, but we're thinking there's enough money, I think it was $11,000, wasn't it, Colin, 11 or 12? Yeah, so there, we, that's, so that's not the money, that's money that we currently have.
So, what about the other 12?
That's coming from Pam's, Pam's-
Pam's pocketbook.
Should we transition to, to the other program?
Pocketbooks.
Right, right, well, I mean, once, you know, so we have a meeting on June 21st, and we would, you know, like to introduce it to the committee, and I'm hoping you can come, so you can talk-
Yeah, I got the invite, I got the invite this morning, yep.
That would be, that would be awesome. And, and then, you know, we would vote on it contingent if the school committee, you know, approves this. So, our vote would be contingent, and I imagine your vote would be contingent on whether we can fund this or not, because it, it would have to be a committee decision, but ideally, it will all work out in, in, you know, the best of all possible worlds.
Yes. Uh, so, so the program that, that we are recommending is Hazelton Publishing's Too Good for Drugs program, uh, which, again, is, uh, actually a K-12-aligned substance abuse and prevention, uh, curriculum, which currently we don't have in the district, uh, we have, uh, you know, things are happening in our, in our PE courses throughout each school, but they are not aligned, nor are they up to date. Um, and as we know how quickly things have changed in the last couple of years regarding our, our students' health and wellness and substance abuse, and the, the things that are now on the market that weren't when we purchased our final textbooks, um, we need to address that, that issue. Um, so, uh, the Too Good for Drugs program, I think it, it checks all of the boxes that we're looking for without stepping on the toes of other programs that we are, that I just presented to you, and that are currently, uh, in, in place. Um, so, just a quick overview, uh, again, it's, it's a per-grade level curriculum, uh, which was important for me, because when we've done programs, when I've done programs in the past that have spanned grade levels, um, there's been that overlap and that mushiness, that wishy-washy of, we did this in third grade, why are we doing it again in fourth grade, or, you know, we-
That's my role, yeah.
Um, so, for, for instance, the, um, the, the Botin Life Skills Training, um, program, one, they didn't have things that went all the way down to kindergarten, um, the same, in the same program, and they had overlapping grades, level one was grade three and four, level two was grade four and five, um, in the elementary school. So, this has basically everything from, from K-12, and I, and I've included here, uh, the elementary and the high school kind of, um, scope and sequences, there is a middle school one as well, but, um, for the sake of your packet, I didn't include it, um, but it really is, um, 10 lessons slash activities slash, you know, whatever you want to call it. The first half of those focus around, um, some of those decision-making skills that we want to encourage in our students, um, and then the, the second half of that is more of the, the substance, that, how to apply those decision-making skills towards substances, peer pressures, you know, alcohol, nicotine, um, uh, drugs that, that, you know, putting those things in, in practice. Um, I've spoken with our, um, middle high school PE and health teachers, uh, they've had the chance to look through this program, and, um, they seem to be on board with it, their, their main concern was, does it address vaping, e-cigarettes, and opioids, uh, because their current materials do not, um, and addresses nicotine, obviously, but it's just cigarettes in their current textbooks, this does, um, I had that confirmed by our sales rep today that it, um, mentions e-cigarettes and vaping. I asked about whether it addressed jeweling, uh, which is very specific, and I had a feeling that it wouldn't, um, and she said it didn't, but, um-
It's a type of-
Yeah, it's a type, it's a type of vape that has become much, easily concealable and popular with, yeah. Um, it doesn't, but I have a feeling that it wouldn't, just because it was so specific, but it at least does address, um, vaping and opioids in the, um, prescription and over-the-counter lessons. So-
Right.
Um, that was a good news for, for our, um, PE and health teachers, because they feel that that's been a, a gap, especially given the times that we're living in. Um, and, uh, also developmentally appropriate, so, so I, I left a, um, a couple sample lessons here, and again, there are many more that you can, that you can look at, and I'd be happy to, uh, provide you, but there's a first grade lesson here, which is all about just kind of, again, knowing how we're feeling and knowing how other people can make us feel, um, which then transitions into, um, you know, being pressured and, and, and just kind of checking yourself and knowing how others can make you feel, um, and when you are feeling safe, and when you are feeling unsafe, and what you need to do in, in all of those situations and scenarios. Uh, just as a precursor, you know, we're not hitting our first graders with, you know, the, the, you know, avoid the, we're not hitting our first graders with the hard, with the hard, heavy stuff, but, you know, safe, safe, safe use of medicine, and, you know, we shouldn't go into our medicine cabinet and just, you know-
Something that you can talk to three-year-olds about, too.
Exactly, exactly, so-
But there's just so much social emotional learning here, that's just building assets and-
That's right.
Building, um, you know, all kinds of internal and external great qualities for our, our students, and experiences, and relationship building, and-
Yep, so it's really all just-
Decision-making.
Starting those discussions and just the understanding early, so that when we get to the, the young adolescents and we need to build those assets even more, they have the, the structure there.
Well, so, at the middle high school, we're looking at the PE and health teachers to focus on the curriculum.
That's right.
Do we know what it's going to look like at Pembroke?
So, not yet, but in the proposal, I've, I've recommended, um, one of the grade-level, uh, again, I'll use the word kits, um, for each class, and, and I, I wrote class and not classroom teacher, um, because I wanted to make sure that every student or class had their own materials, but how that's used between the actual core classroom teacher and a either PE or health teacher, that can be flexible, and, and I need to work out how that structure would actually look. Um, there's the opportunity to merge, when, when we don't have a Second Step lesson that's ready to go, a teacher could, could come into this, or we could, you know, give that option, that opportunity for the PE teacher at Pembroke to also use this material. So, I see it being fluid and, and making sure that everyone has the access and availability to these materials, and work out the best scenario once we've had the discussions on what that would look like within the, within the grade.
Great.
I love the fact that it's a long-term prevention program.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the other, the other program that we looked at was, um, the Lion's Quest, and while that had a drug and substance abuse prevention piece to that program, it was much more geared as a social emotional learning program, which I think is in conflict with the Second Step program that we're suggesting, so I didn't want to-
And I think the, the students in some of the social emotional programs, we have the more self-contained programs, use Lion's Quest.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's like a, if you talk about in tiers, that's a more restrictive tier.
Right.
Well, I'm very, very excited about this.
As am I.
I really think it's going to help address a lot of the, the challenges that we've, you know, uncovered as part of the attitudes and behavior survey, and the needs of the students, me, and the needs of the students, um, that we haven't been able to before, because we've never had a, a consistent and comprehensive A through 12 curriculum in this area. So, we did talk about optional elements for, um, parental and community involvement, but I didn't really get the answer as to what those optional elements were, I couldn't find them. Do you have any answer?
No, I'll have to look into that a little bit more, um, I didn't go, go into that-
Bring that back in.
Yeah, we can-
Because that would be, um, a great component to it, to also have the whole community-
Yep.
You know, speak in the same language, because it is a community issue, you know?
It is, yes. And we've been talking about that through Georgetown Cares, you know, and through the PTA, actually. PTA would love to sponsor some programs, so, you know, if there could be a speaker series for parents in the community, you know, we have finally have some funding that we might be able to look at, and it can enhance what we're doing in the schools.
Absolutely. And connect with and be consistent with.
So, if things come up, as you continue to look and you want some more info, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to do any more research that you need or answer any questions that I have, but...
Great.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
He did. He did both. Oh, he did.
Yeah.
Do we want Colin to...
Oh, yeah, get back.
The technology policy?
Oh, you want to talk about the technology policy? Yeah, he's happy to do that while he's here.
I know, do you want to do that now?
This close, Colin.
Actually, you said you would stay right until you were red.
I did, I did, I offered. All right, so, we met with the Governance Subcommittee on Tuesday?
Tuesday.
I say "we," it was myself, Liz Marquetti, and Sandra Schwartzkopf, who took the role and responsibility of looking at our current technology acceptable use policy and really revamping it, revising it, putting a lot more detail and direction into the acceptable use policy. And this came from the fact that it was, we are now almost a one-to-one district in terms of technology, and with that came a lot of new discoveries and findings and learnings and hiccups that we found along the way of being mostly one-to-one, fourth grade through what will be 11th grade next year. And they thought that the current tech, acceptable use policy as it was written was outdated and vague and didn't have really the teeth in it that it needed to make sure that we, as a district and as schools, have our bases covered, that we're explaining things clearly, that we are being very explicit in what the expectations are when using technology in Georgetown. So, they drafted this policy, which we brought to the Governance Subcommittee group, and we talked through it. I think it's pretty comprehensive and has a lot of things in there that address the specific needs and issues that we've realized have come up over the year. They did some surveys of the staff to find out what issues they were having, what hiccups they were noticing, how students were using the technology in ways that we might not have anticipated, and that is now addressed here. And this would replace the acceptable use policy for the district, and there would be language from this that would then be put into the school handbooks for Penbrook and for the middle high school.
Why, I was surprised to see Google Apps, I was surprised to see specific software mentioned in the policy, in that, yes, we're Gmail today, but, you know, five years from now, we can rewrite policy, obviously, but why are we software-specific in a policy instead of we have any... And it's a minor issue, but I was just surprised to see, you know, we use Gmail as our app.
Like Apple Apps for Education.
Or Apple Apps, right. I think I was surprised just to see the specific...
Yeah, I think the reason for that was the shift to, whether it be Google or anything else, a cloud-based system where we can access everything all at once. I think we wanted to make it clear there that there's going to be lots of information stored in the cloud, which hadn't happened in the past. It's Google-specific now because I think that was fresh in everyone's mind, and that's what we're currently using. I don't know if it needs to be in there, and I'm certainly open to revise it.
I was just wondering if there's kind of a specific...
I think it's just the acknowledgement that...
That's where we are.
That's where we are.
So, would it be in the handbook, maybe, that specific and not in the policy? Or what are you thinking?
Yeah, I think that would be my thought process, is we're all on the cloud, and these are the rules due to that.
Yeah.
And then a handbook says, "We use Google Apps," or whatever.
Yeah.
Not a huge issue.
Yeah, there's a little G Suite permissions, and, you know, that's in there because that's specific to our software and the permissions that we can and cannot give and will and will not give.
Right.
But, yeah, I don't know if we need to be specific.
So, what would it look, how would it look different? Because I think that's referenced throughout this whole thing, so how, what would be put in place?
Right, what would you put in place?
And how would it read? Would we just take that?
Like, would you have to take out definitions or...
No, I think...
Well, no, you would just...
Definitions would be okay, but...
Well, it says "Google Apps for Education," so you would take that out.
It does, that's right.
Right?
Yeah.
And then, when it talks like, "What are Google Apps for Education?"
Michael Teerepan, I would say most, you know, the page two is...
I've read through the first couple of pages.
Is an explainer of kind of what we're using Google for. If that's not policy, then it's really just kind of what we're using.
More of a procedure.
It's more of a, yeah, or a tool.
Right.
Handbook, or a...
Guidelines, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Well, okay.
So, we should...
I guess I...
Well, and it was, I remember specifically saying that consequences or disciplinary actions, if you weren't following the policy, would be in the handbook.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I read that. I feel like I read that somewhere.
Right, right.
So, it would be in both.
So, would you just go through?
I would think the policy would still have discipline because we have that...
I would say most of the page two on the top of page three.
The policy establishes.
Yeah.
The rest of it.
So, what it says, "I pass," right?
That's not what we're talking about.
No.
Okay, so, but the disciplinary would be in both?
Correct.
Yeah.
I thought we talked about...
Yeah, we wanted the discipline to be a little more specific in the student handbook.
More specific. More specific in terms of if you use a swear, it would be this level if...
You wouldn't see discipline in the policy, you would see that if students violate, then there will be punishment.
Then there will be punishment, yeah.
Yeah.
Discipline. I know you don't like the P-word. Right, no, I don't.
Words and F-words.
I don't know. I like the C-word.
So, we want to just, would we want to just take another stab at it, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
We'll just take another stab at that. Okay, so, that's, it's kind of page two.
It's time to end a session.
We just need to smooth out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we could strike a lot of that, and then it would still read the same as the policy.
And Liz authored this six years ago.
I know, she said that.
Yeah, and she was the first one to realize that what she authored six years ago really was at like, it's just like, I can't use much of this anymore because things have changed so much.
So, Colin, so we have to then talk about, so there's the policy, but then is there got, do we want to use this whole document as guidelines for staff and not call it the po, say it's, we have to give them the school committee policy so they know what that is?
Yep.
But is there any, so are page two and three just not necessary for any audience?
Yeah, it's really just more of some informative expository language of what we currently have, and that's not really necessary for a policy.
But it would be for the teachers, though.
Yeah, I mean, we would certainly put that into a teacher handbook.
Maybe I could go into a faculty handbook under guidelines or something.
Faculty handbook, here's what we use, we, you know...
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Yeah, I know a lot of work went into this.
Yeah. Do you want to talk a little bit about the possibility of gaggle?
Yeah, yeah, of course. So, we had a...
Gaggle and Google.
Liz, Sandra, and I, and Peter, had a lot of discussion around student email and how open we wanted our student email accounts to be, our Georgetown student email accounts. And there was the thought of, we of course want to protect our students and make sure that they're safe online and, again, and make sure that the district is protected as well. But we also know that it's in our mission statement that we want students to be engaged with the outside world, and we want them to communicate and take the lessons that they're learning in class and apply them elsewhere. And that caused kind of a conflict in saying, well, the easiest thing to do for security would be to just keep all Georgetown student email in-house. They cannot send anything or receive anything from the outside. However, that conflicts with what our mission statement wants to be. So, then we talked about, well, there was a project that maybe a student could use their personal email address to then reach out to someone, and they could do those communications that way. But then are we still responsible for where a student is writing in a personal email address if it has to do with schoolwork? And it just got really muddled and really messy, and if we were to open our Georgetown emails for students to the outside world, we are then responsible for monitoring that and making sure that what's coming in and out is appropriate, and we just don't have the manpower to do that in-house. So, what Liz found was an organization called Gaggle, and what they do is they monitor all student email incoming and outgoing to look for inappropriate language, images or pictures that are shared or attached, content of all messages, attachments, they're, they kind of have their team of people and their algorithm set up to monitor student correspondence, either with each other, with teachers, or with people outside of our domain. And Ben and I sat in on a phone call with the sales rep who walked us through their process. They kind of have three levels of indication, level one just being kind of a minor offense where a student may use an inappropriate word, and it gets flagged, and a response gets sent back to the student saying, you know, "This seems to be using inappropriate language, you know, we're not going to send this email for you." If that continues, it gets referred to an administrator, and it gets taken up a notch. Level two is where they're looking for anything that's, you know, a little more elevated than that, a picture that's sent that might be deemed inappropriate. Level three is kind of the, where you get into the legal aspect of, you know, anything that could be potentially pornographic that's shared or that's sent, and level three is also can flag any emails that have any indicators of self-harm or threats or violence to anyone else at the school, or any, and that gets immediately flagged to an administrator and to any law enforcement officials locally that it needs to. So, really a comprehensive program and system that a lot of other districts in Massachusetts are using to monitor their student email, just student email, not staff, that we felt was a really good balance of making sure that our students have access to, you know, email and communicate with the outside world, but still making sure that those correspondences are being monitored and being cared for. And Mike Anderson is going to write that into his revised security plan because we felt that that is certainly a proactive measure to make sure that our schools are and students are safe, specifically when it comes to any threats or, you know, violence towards the school or any self-harm. It's certainly a security issue.
So, is every single email read?
Everything, every single email is fed through Gaggle's kind of, their algorithm, so they have...
Right, so they have words.
They have jillions, jillions of keywords that they're looking for.
And then it gets popped out to somebody to then...
And if a keyword gets hit, then it gets sent to someone for that review. They can read the context in which that email was sent and say, "Yeah, that really wasn't appropriate," or, you know, whatever. But, yeah, and we, I asked the rep, you know, our kids are savvy and they can change their language in, you know, very quickly to scoot through, so can we customize any keywords or, you know, hot topics? And they said, "Yeah, of course, just send us whatever you want us to be on the lookout for, if it's an acronym, or if it's a keyword, or if it's a, you know, slang, we'll add that into our system specific to Georgetown, and we'll continue to alert you if anything pops up." So, it seemed very comprehensive, it seemed like they really, I can send you some information on Gaggle, but it impressed us.
What did, to go back to the policy, because you moved away when I saw the question. What is our, and I'm thinking back to the handbooks that we talked about last meeting, whatever it was, talking about coaches directly communicating with one student and how that was not appropriate. What is our policy? And I don't think it speaks to it very well, or I didn't understand it very well. Can a teacher, can one teacher email one student? Or can a teacher email a class? From a policy perspective? So, I know we had discussed the appropriate, the potential issues that come up of sort of the non-public communication and issues that that could handle, and I think Gaggle could speak to that, but you're saying not staff email.
If a staff were to email a student, it would go through Gaggle.
Because it's the student.
Because it's a student.
Because it's a student.
Is it through?
No, because it's, because Gaggle is monitoring any incoming or outgoing student.
So, it's really just monitoring the student's mailbox, essentially.
Right, right.
Whatever's going.
So, and if a teacher happens to send a message to a student's inbox, it's going through Gaggle.
I would say that if you're using the school emails, that's fine. You don't want people using their personal emails to communicate with students, because there are times like, you know, homeworks due, you know, and such and such.
Yeah, and I know a teacher that sends out class emails. I find them very helpful.
Well, but it's the difference between a class email and a one-on-one email. It is the thing that we've sort of talked about for a while but never really settled on.
I guess I, personally, I feel if it's school-related, and it's, you know, it's a school-related, you know, you forgot your homework, or, you know, somebody emails a teacher and says, you know, "Can I can this in on Thursday?" It's school-related, I, using school emails, I personally wouldn't have an issue with that as a tool for communicating. You know, I certainly would have an issue if it was personal, you know, but, I mean, I just feel like we give kids emails and teachers emails, and the expectation is that they're communicating, and I personally don't see any harm in that, you know?
I wonder if the staff thinks that that's like a gray area, because I do know that certain teachers, you know, will directly, like, you know, if things are going through Google Docs, that they'll send like a direct email saying, "Oh, you know, you may want to revise this," or these, you know. But then other teachers have then sent me an email saying, "Can you just tell that, you know, we're having a test," you know? So, I wonder if it's questionable for them, because I agree with you. I personally feel like if it's educational, and we can verify that it's educational, then I'm fine with the one-to-one.
I agree.
I think the communication is good because the kids get like that quick if the teacher reads the paper and gets the information.
I mean, I'm just thinking like through Schoology and those things, I think there's an ability to communicate, I mean, there's a communication built right into that.
And in parent portals or student portals, there is that ability, it doesn't...
I mean, we're talking about the worry about somebody, you know, saying something that might be, you know, inappropriate.
And that's what Gaggle would pick up.
If it were sent to a student, yes.
Yes.
Staff to staff, no.
Right.
I feel like we would have, we would find that out, and then we would deal with it. But I think we can make it clear to the teachers, if you're communicating with students, it needs to be using school email, and it needs to be educationally related.
Right. Because that way, no, Gaggle or no Gaggle, if it's school email to school email, we have all the, every archive to...
Right, but it's an issue of if it happens, it's sort of too late.
Right.
You know, so, yeah. You want to be preventative, but you also don't want to shut down emails so that it doesn't work.
That's right. Right, you don't want to minimize the opportunity to use it as a communication tool.
That was the balance that we were trying to find.
And I think to your point of being able to email the outside world, if we say, "You can't do that at school, go do it at home," whether or not we're responsible for the email getting into all that, we're saying, "Don't do this in the school environment."
Yeah, school's not a place to...
Which is sending a pretty bad message.
I agree, I agree. So, I'm glad that we found that this, this system that can seem to...
How did you find it?
Liz Marquetti did some research and referred it to us, and then Ben and I got on the phone with the sales rep and...
There is a membership fee for yearly, $5,000.
But that would go into the safety plan, hopefully.
For initial.
For next year.
Yeah.
Although we have to work it into the technology budget if we're going to do that.
Were we spending?
Just saying.
One-off money on our hiring expense?
Are we doing what?
Nothing. We'll talk about it tomorrow.
It's going to be a long meeting. Nope, we can't be, it's Friday.
At 5:00.
4:00.
4:00.
Okay.
Great.
So, we'll re-formate this a little bit.
Yep.
Bring it back.
So, it's not much work, right?
No, it's really just striking that.
I like it a lot.
So, we'll put on the 628 agenda.
Very good.
Under old business.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret can tape off.
Now, you can go.
Sure.
All right. Good. So, where are we now? Do you have financial stuff? Yeah, you got a couple.
Yeah, so, want to talk about the leases, the three-year lease?
Yeah, so, we have 12 copy machines that are coming to the end of a lease.
Yep.
So, tonight, they'll physically, we are removing the copy machines.
Are these, why don't we do copiers as lease purchase? Like, are they just at the end of their life? Okay.
And they, they used to allow it, but the new state contract doesn't allow it, so they changed the rules a little bit on the contract.
They don't make copiers for school, really. So, we buy these business copiers, and then we exceed them by, you know, out, you know, hundreds of thousands of copies.
Even with the, even with the way people are using like technology, are we seeing a decrease in it, though?
I don't know that we've monitored that.
I don't think we've seen a decrease.
I imagine that there probably is, and we just haven't seen it, because they don't have to run off everything that the kids are doing.
Email was supposed to make the world paperless, and it didn't.
Right. They still do run off quite a bit, I think. But they used to have that $1 buyout.
Right.
Yes.
A couple of leases, the contract before this contract.
$1 is a lot less than...
Yeah.
I know, but now they physically take them away, so.
Okay.
Forces you to replace them.
And then we have this in the budget.
Yes, this is, because we just, we paid the last payment this year, so it's in there.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to approve the three-year lease to Chronicle Minolta Business Solution in the total of $102,990.60 with three annual payments of $34,330.20. So, moved. Second. Were there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A lot of money. Copiers are very expensive.
Twelve copiers.
But you know what? Suzanne can tell you as a teacher, if you don't, nothing makes a school shut down and people be more concerned that when they go in and the copier is not working...
I swear, our Xerox technician is on staff. He's there every day.
But it makes people crazy when they can't, the copier is not working.
Yeah, and you can tell when a copier is coming to the end of its useful life, because the man is there every day.
Every day.
Exactly. You know, and, you know, you hear a little sound, and you know how to like shake the machine and pick up papers.
There's a little more toner in there.
So true.
Listen, I remember the days of the, the crank things.
And the fluid that you had to put in.
The papers were blue. You had purple hands all, all the time. There was this magic pink.
Purpleish fluid.
Hook it off like crazy. But I remember those days.
Kids used to like the smell of it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's what they used to do.
That's what happened.
Okay, so then we have line item transfers.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve line item transfers, 226 through, I just don't want to get mine out. 315, the total increase of $187,882.46.
It's a transfer.
Yeah, transfers.
It's not an increase.
Oh, sorry, transfer. I'm looking at that now. Transfer.
No, we're not increasing budget. It does, it does say total increase.
Right, but then there's a total reduction.
But then there's a decrease on the other side.
Yeah.
Then that is zero. I see.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Perfect. Got that taken care of.
Okay, we have a donation from the preschool.
Parents.
Parents group. Okay, so a sunsetter awning for the playground is a great idea.
Yes.
I, I didn't see, it's not out there, right?
No, no.
Good, good, good. Okay, just asking.
We know the rules.
No.
That was a test.
They aren't done that much.
So here's my question on, on, one is money, one is an item. How does that decision, it, it's money for a, for the awning?
Yeah.
And it is, if I'm reading it correctly, physically a compost bin.
Yes.
Why? It, it doesn't matter. I'm just curious.
We didn't get to the bin yet. That's the way they presented it to us.
Well, it's too, I'm, I'm asking from a.
I think, I think it, I guess it's depending on how they want to do it. Because we, we got the information from Amanda, who got it from the parents.
For sure.
So I don't know. I mean, I don't know that we have a standard.
Right.
I think.
And it sort of speaks to the conversation about the pitcher's mound.
About the pitching mound, right.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I think in this case, it's just how it came from the parents. I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and maybe that awning was just the best one for the, for the area.
And maybe they were thinking of, it was bigger, and it was, needed to be installed, and all that kind of stuff, or the other.
Oh, so you're saying this one, we're getting money.
The other one is getting the bin.
Notably, they've included money for tax, which we shouldn't theoretically be paying.
It shouldn't be paid, yeah.
So, yeah, more, more of a.
Yeah, questionable about that, yeah.
Well, I think like the compost bins, that somebody can pick it up at Home Depot.
Yeah.
But this, I think, has to be, or it's probably special.
Has to be ordered and installed.
Oh, it does, installed.
Yep.
That's the guess. Maybe they thought that's what they were doing, is just taking that on that way.
Okay.
Okay, well, that's a generous donation, purchase and awning for the preschool playground. So.
It's a retractable, I think.
Nice.
Yeah, so they don't need it unless they really need it.
Yeah, on the back of it.
That's great. Yeah, I like that.
And they'll install it themselves.
Interesting installing it.
I would assume Mike and company?
It'd probably be Mike and company, but, you know, maybe, maybe a team.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the donation of $2,068.29 for the purchase of a retractable awning for the integrated preschool.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation of $96.99, which will go towards a purchase of a compost bin for the integrated preschool.
So moved.
That speaks to my question from a minute ago. Are we accepting $96? Are we accepting a compost bin?
Well, yeah, that's interesting, because it does say that.
So it just has, it's worth a nice donation. Donation for the purchase of, so, right, are we accepting that?
So we'll just say 96, 99?
What does it say? Please accept the donation of the compost bin.
Yep, the price, and they're just telling you how much they paid for it.
Okay, so we'll change that motion, that, um, the motion to approve the compost bin that will be located at the integrated preschool.
Yes, you're right, that would be the better motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for that.
That makes sense.
Two very generous donations. It's very nice.
No, you can take it.
So she's stolen from me.
Okay, and now we're moving on to.
How do we leave Suzanne?
Well, I think they're talking about two evaluations, but I think they're done.
Right, we have the superintendent's evaluation, and we also have our school committee self-evaluation.
You always stay late.
They don't have any exec evaluation, so you're good.
So I will, why don't we start with the school committee self-evaluation? Thank you all for taking the time to do that and get all the information to Nancy a few weeks back. I'm just going to go through the results quickly, and, you know, under the, the topics. So, under the, the first one is the governance topic. So we, I'm pleased to say that, on average, we scored mostly all strongly agree on most things, or agree. We didn't have any that we were in disagreement of, which, which is great. And I think that speaks to the way that we work, we all work together so well. We work together so well, we work great with the administrators, and, yeah, the communication, I think, is, is, is great. So I was, I was really happy with this. So the governance, this score is evidence that we feel that the policies are updated as necessary. We feel that we regularly evaluate the progress relative to our goals that we adopt. We're confident that the committee uses their best judgment in refraining from involving ourselves in the administrative aspect of the district. The school committee have an, had an average score of 2.2 in relation to committee members taking part in educational workshops. So I think we need to maybe, you know, look a little more into those. But we certainly could do more, and I believe that with the amount of time that we already put into our positions here, it does make it difficult to go to any more, and also the proximity of a lot of things.
The proximity with them. But when I look at this, I was also thinking of how well-informed we are because of you. You're always sending articles, so I think that it does keep us current and up to date.
Oh, I'm glad that you don't mind my articles.
Oh, no.
Some you could disrupt, but I love sharing.
No, so that's, you know, so I look at that as, okay, we're, we're still being educated by you with you sending, you know? So that's how I was looking at it, that I was still getting an educational workshop through what you're, you know, generating for us to take a look at.
And the proximity is great.
The proximity is. So that's how I sort of looked at that one, because.
So we keep updated with what's going on, you know?
Because the ones that they do have are far and few between.
Yes.
And are quite a distance away, so it does take a lot of time away.
Right. Yeah, some of them are even like plane rides.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, so, but, but I, you know, I, I always enjoyed the ones that we did, you know, over the summertime. But I know it's, it's a lot of time we put into this, so I'm just thrilled.
We went on the retreat.
Yeah. Yeah, that was fun.
Because it's always a way to, you know, to reconnect on a different level.
Yeah, the way I scored was mostly looking at myself, and that I think I need to attend some more things. Because I seem to be an outlier in a number of these, and I, I don't even know why. Oh, I was an outlier, but I made myself great.
You're just judging yourself.
Yeah, I think I was.
Lighten up.
Your scale is, you're setting your.
Higher than.
The bar.
Um, under member, no, actually, governance, yes, operations. One, a 1.6 and a 1.4 was the average, so these scores indicate that the roles and responsibilities of the school committee officers are defined. New members do receive adequate training, but we can always do better.
And I don't think.
And we haven't had any.
We haven't had any. That's how I looked at it.
Reminds me, Eric, did you guys finish that document?
It is finished.
It's finished, okay. So we should probably put it all in the folder, because we had that Robert's Rules.
Yes.
So, yeah, so we haven't had to give it out to anybody, but have, has the whole committee seen like a finished product?
No.
I don't think so. So let's, let's, let's just, if it's finished, maybe you can come in and we can just.
Yeah, good. Thank you guys for doing that.
So I'll put that on, I'll put that.
We haven't had any, any new members, and when we did, I tried my hardest to, you know, to answer any questions anybody had.
Yeah, some, some are.
So we'll put that on 6/28.
The procedures and protocols in relation to our operations are published and understood. We all feel that way. Under member relations, scored 1, 1, 1, 1.2, 1.4, and a 1.
Pretty good.
These ratings are indicative of a group of people that highly respect each other and all that they give to the school committee. We encourage each other to speak their opinions, and to assert their right to share their concerns. We share information with each other when necessary to ensure that all are on the same page. I don't think anyone ever feels like they're being left out of anything, and I hope that, I think these indicate that they don't feel that way, so that's great. We do our homework and come prepared for the items that are on the agenda, and we each understand the role of each individual as it relates to the entire committee. Committee and the superintendent relations, proud to say that we scored a 1, 1.2, 1, 1, 1, 1.
Yep.
Once again, these results indicate that the working relationship between the school committee and the superintendent is a highly respectful one. The frequency of communication is above target, and we all feel that the superintendent is accessible to us at all times, whether it's through face-to-face communication, cell phone, office phone, or texting. The response time is great. We feel that we are all able to contact the superintendent if something comes up on a day-to-day basis, and we receive the information in a timely manner. If she doesn't have the information readily available, she will find the information out for us and get back to us. We do feel that we operate on a no-surprise model, which is why we all work together so well.
Yep.
And I appreciate that.
Me, too.
Strategic planning and fiscal management, that was a 1, 1.4, 1, 1.4, 1, 1, 1.2, 1.2. We agree that we have a partnership in the formulation of a strategic plan, and it is reviewed regularly. The budget process is published and accessible to all. The school committee, along with the superintendent and administrative team, provides a detail of the budget process and welcomes the community's input, and the committee is satisfied with the reports received from the superintendent, Budget and Finance Subcommittee, and Suzanne's partner. Community relations, a 1.6, 1.2, and a 1. We all agree that the committee has a public relations plan for the district. The public is always welcome to participate in the decision-making process. We enjoy hearing from the community, and I, I know that we all feel that the community is welcome here at any time. We are here to help, we're here to listen. The committee works well with other government branches. We have a great working relationship with Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, Police, Fire, Highway Department, and the Georgetown Light Department. I think we all have a, have a very highly respectful relationship. Everybody seems to only want to help each other out. I love the fact that the Finance Committee and the School Committee has worked well the last couple of years with the budget process, because that's not always an easy, an easy relationship, because, you know, you're asking, anytime you're asking for money, it's, it's difficult. But I love the fact that we've come a long way.
A very long way. And I think the finance, we've helped educate the Finance Committee on why we need money that we need, and think they're understanding, and we're understanding their position as well.
Yeah, and I think that helps, that they, they don't feel like we think they're the bad guy, you know? And, and I do like that, that the questions come, rather than just the assumption of, you know, what it means, that they're actually, they, they want to know the answers. So I'm, I'm thrilled with that. So personally, I'm proud of the relationship with everybody that we deal with and look forward to continuing to work together to make Georgetown the best that it can be.
Absolutely. What's always interesting to me, and it happens regularly, is how the consistency of, of, everybody rates them individually, right? And then when you pull it together, it's like, wow, you know, people really have a common, you know, common understanding and a common belief. And that's really important, because sometimes you can have the outliers, and you're like, uh-oh, what's, where's the disconnect here? But that usually has not with this committee, at least, you know, in the future that I've seen, since you've all been together, that's always been consistent, which is great.
It is good. Does anyone want to add anything else? With that school himself evaluation?
I remember doing that the first time, and I was like, this is so odd. But now I actually enjoy like taking the time to do like a year-end review, you know, and see if there are things that, you know, we can work on.
And then it, you know, it does show you, okay, well, this is what needs to be worked on, because we're not all in agreement here.
Right, right.
Thankfully.
Yeah, we're pretty good.
I am very thankful for all of you guys. So I just want you to know that.
And not you.
But I, I do love the working relationship that we have, so thank you for that.
Same here.
Okay, now we're going to go on to the superintendent's evaluation. Usually, I know. Usually it's on here. Do you, do you want your copies?
Sure.
Yep. I brought them.
That's mine.
Suzanne?
Thank you.
And?
Thank you.
Michael?
Thank you.
And Cheryl?
Oh, I, mine.
You have yours.
Hers is in color.
So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to go through each standard, and I'll just let the superintendent know how, how everyone, each person rated, then go through the performance goals, and then just do, you know, a brief, like, summative of what, you know, I, I came up with.
Well, Carol has.
Yeah, I had the, I had the opportunity to say that.
Yes. So standard one, under instructional leadership, the superintendent was rated proficient by every, by each committee member. Standard two, management and operations, the superintendent received four proficient and one exemplary. Standard three, under family and community engagement, not surprising, four exemplary and one proficient. Standard four, professional culture, all proficient. The impact on student learning, three moderates and two high. And under performance goals, professional practice, four met and one significant progress. Student learning, three significant, one some progress, and one met. If you guys want me to go through like individual, what those, what that means, I don't know for the public if that's something that we want to discuss. I don't know how in-depth I got in before.
I don't think you've ever gotten that in-depth, but.
Where did I leave off? Student Learning?
Oh, you did that one.
Okay, so District Improvement, one, four met, one exceeded. District Improvement, two, three met, two exceeded. District Three, District Improvement, three. Three met, two significant progress. District Improvement Four, two met, one some progress and two significant progress. So with that being said, the school committee has rated Superintendent Jacobs overall as proficient in her yearly evaluation. The highest rating for a superintendent is exemplary. This rating of proficient is in no way a reflection of the school committee's disapproval of Superintendent Jacobs' job performance. We view the superintendent as a highly qualified and exceptional school leader that is continuing with professional growth. I would like to highlight some of the comments about the superintendent that I found in the committee's evaluations. One committee member mentioned an excellent superintendent who is passionate about education with a positive outlook, is a self-reflector and is an active participant in our community. The superintendent's turnaround plans for the Food Services Department and Athletic Department are greatly appreciated. Superintendent Jacobs has worked tirelessly to build and defend a level services four point four five budget this year with no teacher cuts. This is attributed to strong relationships and frequent communication with the Town Finance Committee. Further comments, Superintendent Jacobs has met all of her challenges this year with her characteristic can-do attitude. Superintendent Jacobs has a clear vision for academic excellence that continues to bring life to the mission and strategic goals of the Georgetown Public Schools. Superintendent has given our district a renewed focus on building more civility, acceptance, and inclusion into our school culture. It's a big one. Superintendent Jacobs continues to receive an exemplary rating under Standard Three, Family and Community Engagement. She attends most, if not all, events pertaining to our students and their cause. The students find her completely approachable, which I consider to be her best quality because I, I do feel that students, you know, she's the, the leader of the entire district. So to me, it's like, it's, you know, up there in terms of how our how the students view her and you're so approachable and I know when I, you know, are with, anytime I'm with you walking through the schools, the kids have no issue with, you know, stopping her, some give her hugs and, you know, just saying, you know, walking through Penbrook, they have.
Hi, Mrs. Jacobs.
Yeah, walking through Penbrook, they give her big hugs and the middle high school, same. It's the, it's just a, a really nice way to see the kids interact with you.
I, I need to do it more. Those students, when I talked about them at graduation, the students that I met at that superintendent's workshop, the last question that the stu-, the students were asked is, okay, so you're sitting here with a whole room of superintendents, what advice would you give superintendents? What are, what are, and you know, it, it occurred to me that, you know, you go to things and you visit with kids, but you know, we don't really ask their opinion, you know, so I was thinking I might have office hours or something, you know, so, you know, there could be a more regular communication because, you know, I, I learn a lot from the kids, you know, and not just negative, the kids are very positive. But, you know, and I introduce, and I meet with the superintendent's awards winners, when I, when I just, you know, go to a concert and I talk to the kids, you learn a lot. And you, you see the, the strength of the, of the kids and it's all about the kids. But you know what? We don't really listen to them a lot. We don't really check in with them on their ideas, you know, we talk to them, but it's not like, you know, really want to hear and that survey that we took, you know, where they said, you know, they don't necessarily feel that, you know, they're valued. I, I want to think more about that, you know, for myself. Because I, like you said, I do enjoy the kids very much. And just having a chance to sit and talk to them about, you know, sort of, you know, what are some, I encourage them to come out with ideas and like really let them be felt, feel like you're listening to them. Like if you want to do that, we can make that happen with you. You can try that. And I think Dan has a, a very positive attitude about that. He is very student-oriented, I think you can see that. So I think, you know, it just makes me think that, you know, like you said, I, maybe it's not about going to events, it's like structuring time where you are engaging with students and not just the students that want to engage, you know, like taking the opportunity to say, I wonder what the experience is like for this group of kids. You know, that, you know, I don't recognize, you know.
For the community center, we need to, you know, figure out what they're thinking. Maybe have a focus group or something and just invite any, any student who wants to be a part of it, you know, please come.
I do appreciate the, the comment and, and I, I do agree 100%, but it makes, I've been thinking about that after I talked to those kids that, you know, maybe there's a more structured way to actually just informally, just be aware and actually say, come and talk to me, if you'd like to talk to me.
I think it's impressive that the kindergartners know who you are.
That is great.
You know, I mean, most of the time they're just.
So they don't understand, like, you know, the position.
But they know who she is.
The lady who cancels school.
The fact that you go to every event to support the students and the community.
Thank you.
Sometimes I think you shoot yourself in the foot though. Go to one thing or you're coming in late or you have to leave or it's, it's like all, you know, the kids are like.
You're a victim of your own standing.
Yeah, no, it's very true. There are times when it's like, okay, I, I'm not going to be able to go to two things. But, you know, people do sometimes ask, oh, we didn't see you at the.
I know you were at the baseball banquet last night, Dominic.
I was, I was. Tony was there too.
Yeah, he was.
Suzanne and I sat together.
They ain't got home till like eight thirty.
Yeah.
I heard, I heard it was a lot of fun.
But, you know, it's fun for me also, you know, I do enjoy the interaction with the parents and, and you know, I don't have, like you all have families that you have to go home to and do that. I mean, for, you know, a lot of this stuff is, is great for me because it just fills my time too. So I do really enjoy the opportunity to do that. And I, I know it's appreciated, so that makes me feel that it's even more important, you know.
Definitely.
Right, but I do feel bad for the next superintendent that comes.
I have to say, it's not required.
And I did want to say that too, that you don't reside in our community, but you continue to support and provide insight into new ways of bringing success to Georgetown.
Thank you. She is a community builder.
Yes, she is. So I would like to commend the superintendent on what I would call a successful year that had some challenges. To me, the challenges we faced were significant challenges because of the angst caused by community members. The superintendent believes in communicating as effectively as possible, holding community forums, giving our parents the ability to raise their concerns to the people that can make those change, changes happen. It isn't always easy to be in the hot seat. We all know that, but as a superintendent, she can find herself there a few times throughout the year. You handle yourself appropriately, always respectful of others' comments, willing to provide a solution. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I commend you on your working relationship with the administrative team. You support them in their, to make their decision-making process, but as a leader, you will question them on actions taken and ask for justifications if you feel necessary. The collaborative relationship that you have with the current School Committee makes our job easier and definitely more enjoyable. We find you approachable and willing to listen to us even when you may have to talk to us or me personally off the ledge. It's happened a few times and I appreciate your insight. The concerns I have on a go-forward basis, you know, are the Athletic Department, you know, and the Food Services. I'm thrilled that the changes have been made to the Food Services Department and I feel it's in a positive direction. I'd like to see, I would like to continue to see new ideas of food offerings and allow the students to have a larger say in what they are offered in, at, at school lunch. We need to see the revolving account healthier. I think Sean's on track to make that happen. And with Suzanne's guidance and leadership, I'm hopeful the next year will be big for that department. As far as athletics go, I have no solution to the problem. I do know that we have.
Did you feel it was better though this year? Then like, you remember you were concerned, seriously concerned the year before. Do you feel like it was better?
Yeah, well, I'm talking more like the money.
Oh, oh, the money, yeah, okay, not the program necessarily. Well, the money is a problem.
So I, I think that we need to find viable solutions that don't include higher user fees for our parents. Athletics is an important part of the full educational experience for our kids, as I'm sure you all.
I agree.
Agree. They learn a lot through their teammates as well as the coaches. We can't allow user fees to determine whether or not a student participates. I'm hopeful that Shannon Dow will revitalize the boosters program. I think that's a great program and I have, I really have a lot of faith in her and the people that she'll bring to the table to do that. We need to be supported financially throughout the outside revenue sources. The parents can't be the, the ones that are taxed all the time.
You're right.
I applaud the new Assistant A.D. position and thank both Ryan and Guy for partnering for the athletes. I know that they both are dedicated to seeing the athletic program flourish. And I was thrilled with the new coaches review, the coaches evaluation. I think the, that process is going to be great and I think that I, I have a lot of faith that that's going to make the program better for everyone that is part of that athletic program. The, I do think that the, this year, I, I saw a change in that. So to answer your question, yes, I, I definitely, on a positive, I didn't see any further negatives. So I, I look forward though again to seeing what Shannon can do to bring that boosters organization together. And I know she would have a lot of support from us because we all know how important athletics is. And we just have to find a way to have our athletes go out there and be proud that they're from Georgetown and just, you know, wins or losses, just to, you know, make the community proud because they, they really put their heart and soul into it. And I think, I think that's great. So with that being said, so that was just a summative of everybody and then my personal, so if anyone wants to add to that.
I mean, I feel like you've said a lot of what I was.
She's a good summarizer.
Well, I, I guess I want to commend Carol for continuing to challenge herself to step out of her comfort zone in the area of technology. And I feel like we see you continually work on this with support and you know the right people to go to. But just in particular, the, doing the podcast, which, you know, hopefully there'll be more to come.
Yes, there will.
Getting us where we need to be with the one-to-one initiative. And the, sort of the support and seeing the necessity for the technology integration. So to continue to make technology a priority and the integration of technology a priority. I think that Carol should be commended for passing this level services budget. This is the first time since I've been on the committee that we haven't had to make cuts.
It's the first time in my 11 years that we haven't had to make reductions, so I am grateful for that.
That wasn't an easy feat, so we recognize that. Anybody can drop in.
No, I, I really appreciate everything you do. It's just, it's so much. I go through every year kind of a, a list of, I write down the things, everything that, your notable accomplishments. And I, there's so many, I have to divide them up into different areas, different groupings and I'm not going to read all of them, that's just going to take too long. But I, so I grouped them into new initiatives and challenges, areas of high growth and improvement, continued programs and services, which, you know, you still, you, so you need credit for these because they take an awful lot of time and, and effort, like community presence at every event. I mean, you've always been doing that, but we just continue to, to appreciate it. And then I do, I have some growth areas, challenges ahead, but I'll just, maybe I'll just keep it to a few new initiatives. You know, you're rolling out of the new iPad initiative for grades seven and nine with a focus on instructional integration of technology. You're rolling out the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support at the Penbrook. That's a huge thing that you've been, we've been working towards for a long time, which it's a research-based behavior support system to, to promote the CARES value and help all students succeed. The teacher contract negotiations, that took a lot of time and effort that really have, you know, has come to a productive resolution and that I think is going to be work out for everybody and, and help us all. The Maker Spaces at the Penbrook and, and that's kind of your baby. You've been so enthusiastic and, and that's so helpful to to a lot of many, many students, you know, just, that'll allow them to be more creative and, and it's, have great initiatives and oh, innovation, you know, it just, it helps give them opportunities to really develop their innovative visions. Community forums and crisis communication. Let's see, established proactive timely community safety initiative in collaboration with the Police Department included, including bringing in the new high school SRO. You've made an excellent hire in, in a new high school principal and it wasn't just the hire, it's the whole process where you involved students and, and faculty and parents. And I mean, you, you know, you were guiding a, a committee of what, like 24 people?
There were a lot of people, but they were really very good to work with.
Yes, yes. And, and it was great to have everybody's opinion is, is important and you just brought, brought it all together really, really well. You also conducted an executive secretary search very successfully. And so that, it hasn't been an easy year for you in that way. Helping in the office. Vertical team development, bringing on STEM scopes of new curriculum, science, math, ELA, creating a shared maintenance plan with the town, Project Lead the Way, science and technology curriculum. I mean, I could go on.
That's why we're all so tired.
Working with Georgetown CARES, Essex County Asset Builders and the Health and Wellness Committee to conduct our 2017 Attitudes and Behavior Survey, following up with the action plan, shepherding the, the NIESK visit process.
We did do a lot this year.
The Anti-Defamation League Professional Development has started. They're going to have summer training and then we look forward to the student training in the fall. So, and that, that's, those are just the new initiatives. So then the, the growth, just some of the growth areas and challenges ahead, the new security plan needs, including physical plant changes, the new systems, you know, going, making the, the two, the double SRO program really, really work. I mean, there's a lot of things we're going to be watching in the year to head to, the year ahead to make sure it's all working in the best possible way for our students. So the, the new social emotional needs curriculum, the student training with the Anti-Defamation League, needing to integrate the new computer science curriculum state, required strands into the existing frameworks, that's going to be a huge, a huge change ahead. And stabilizing, of course, the athletic and food and preschool budgets and all that business and that's, but you know, and we've still are, all our rankings and assessments have stayed in, in exemplary areas, wonderful areas. Our SAT scores have gone up. Ninety-three percent of the 2017 graduating class went on to further their education. The eighth, and the eighth annual AP District Honor Roll, 100% of our students get between three and five in AP exams. And making that happen year after year is truly, truly remarkable. Because I, I saw a, a study of like all the best schools in, in the country and I don't really know why we're not there because the, a lot of the schools like in the top, you know, the top 10 and the top 15, they didn't have that. They didn't have 100% of their students getting between three and five AP scores. So I don't know how they missed us.
I know. It's interesting to know how they are, what the criteria is for each one.
And how they weight them, you're not always sure how they weight them.
Right, I often wonder that.
Yeah, but in, in any case, I just really, really appreciate your tireless dedication, commitment to, to making our community a better community. You are a true community builder and I'm grateful for everything you do.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
And I just want to say one little, little thing. Was, you know, I remember Carol when she started in the district and I would say from the moment she started here, she was very clear about her commitment to high standards for children, for all children, teachers, administrators. And I think she continues to, as a leader, you know, to make everybody understand that. And I think these expectations along with accountability have helped our school district grow and thrive.
Thank you.
And you're also not afraid to deal with any issues that arise and you deal with it head-on. And the F-word. Because I think that really helps the community be able to get out their, their feelings and their frustrations. And then, you know, to deal with it in a healthy manner, that you can resolve the conflicts or at least as best to sort of diffuse it.
Right. Thank you, Suzanne.
And I'll be, I'll be, I'll be quick as well, but not, not.
Not as quick as I was?
Not as quick. No, I, I think, I think what, what gets me is, is having a vision and the knowledge of the district as, as much as you do, which I think comes with longevity in the district, that you've, you've had the, the time to start things and then see it five years later and, and know where it is and know what, what needs to be done. I think that the, the vision to have that coupled with recognizing the opportunity when we can change something, you know, whether it's the, the assistant principal thing at the, at the middle school, you know, hey, now's the opportunity, what are our options? I, I think, I think that's a huge asset.
Thank you, thank you, Michael. Yeah, we have to make a new strategic plan. I talked to the administrators about that. So, you know, we'll be talking to you again about, okay, so some of these ideas that you put down, areas of growth, we'll definitely put them in the plan, for sure. But we've already started working on that. Things we absolutely know, either we need to continue or something new we need to bring in. So we'll be talking to you about that as much as we can and then in October, we'll just bring a draft to you and then we'll determine if we all agree, then it'd be three years, three years out. And but if there are things you like, you, we really have to do this, just let, let us know because we can integrate them, you know, into, we'll just use the same focus areas unless you think we should change them. But they pretty much, as you see when we even put the books together, that they really do pretty much take into consideration all of the major systems in this, in the, in the, in the district. And then where we can, we connect them. So I think, you know, if we can stick with those. So I think, you know, if we can stick with those basic themes, then the action steps can certainly be, but I, you know, I'm very, very grateful, I should just retire now, you know, I mean, quit with your head, right? You know, but at this, but no, no, we're not ready, we're not ready for that either, but I am truly grateful for the opportunity to work with the committee and certainly your kind words, you know, really touch my heart and I really do appreciate it, I, it is my pleasure, I've told you that, working in this town, you know, it's, it's, it's been a great fit for me, I think I brought some things, but I've also gotten probably more than I've given here, and, you know, it's the just, uh, it's just been wonderful with the partnerships we have, and we just keep thinking of things we're doing, like the youth center, I love, I wanted to do that years ago, but it wasn't the right time, we didn't have resources, we didn't have money, there were all kinds of things, but like, like Michael said, I think your comment means a lot to me because sometimes it is about timing, it's about not just a good idea, but it can't, we can't make that work right now, but we have an opportunity, we, we take in and run with it and connect it, and I think we have accomplished, you know, someday I'm gonna sit down and just, with the administrators, and just make a, a list of, you know, in the last ten years, what are, what are the things that we've done, I think we'll all, all of us will be very impressed with that, 'cause it, you know, yes, I certainly am the leader, you know, obviously in a situation like this I get credit and other situations I don't get credit, but the fact of the matter is we are a team, and I'm proud of our administrative people, and I've had great people all the way through, people have left, new people have come, and they've been amazing. You know, I can't do it alone, I wouldn't wanna do it alone, I would feel like I failed if it was all about me, and I said that, when I, when I leave the district at some point, if everything falls apart, then I didn't do my job, 'cause my job is to make sure that we build the capacity of everyone here to believe in the vision and to be connected to it and play their role and make things move forward. You know, I look at it, we're all on these roads of, this is the journey, right, but you pop onto the road, it's been there before you, it'll be there after you, so you wanna, as I said at Peter's party, or somebody's party, you wanna leave the place better than it came.
Wanna repave it.
You know, you just wanna leave it better than it came, 'cause you can't expect any more of anybody than that, right? But, uh, we have much to be proud of, and, um, we're all part of the same goals and team, and we have the best people in the world and a great community, so, thank you, I, I really, I feel, you know, very appreciative of, of all your kind words and your suggestions for growth, that's always important too.
Great.
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Um, I think so, I think we're done.
All right.
Okay, I will, uh, make a motion to adjourn, nine forty-five P.M., there's no need for an executive session this evening.
So, second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you, have a good night.
Good night.